This meeting to order. It is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood held on December 17th, 2013 at 6:00 PM. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Howery?
Present.
Councilmember Garrison?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pfeifer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. I'm looking for a pen. Ah, found one. Purses can be deep and dark. You know. That's why every purse should have a light inside when you look over it. I've tried to trade for it. You tell me, Mint tell me. What do you need that for? To buy your credit card. Or at least have like a white lining instead of a black, right? Okay. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll. Could you do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're at the Pledge of Allegiance. So tonight, if we could get Jake, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a no. Okay, next we'll have a brief summary. A brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, just a couple items. If you get a chance, you may want to go back and buy and check out the new carpet in the library. It's really nice and they're doing all the work at night. They've got about half the library done and they'll probably finish up tonight. But no disruption to the library, but it's a real improvement over the carpet that was in there. Last Saturday, we had our annual shop with the cop. The police officers hosted 30 kids and they were able to go shopping and buy gifts for themselves and their family. And this Friday, at the rec center, we're doing Toys for Tots and that's from 1:00 to 4:00 at the rec center. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember, members, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, on December 7th, I had the honor to be the emcee for the Verdi Valley Voices concert. And then on December 8th, I had the honor to be the emcee for the Cottonwood Community Band Concert. And they were both wonderful. Both houses were packed and I think we're just lucky to have things like this in Cottonwood and have people put these events on for us. It was terrific.
Great.
Really helped build the community.
And I'd just like to thank Mr. Pratt for, he's emceeing Walking on Main and now he's actually, people have noticed what a great job he does and so they're inviting him for other activities in the community. So he's doing a very good job. And it's pretty busy too, right? Keeps you busy?
Oh yeah. Which is, that way I don't get in trouble.
This is true. This is true. Councilmembers? Okay. This month, my TV interview was Daryl and Pat Dirks and Amy Ossie with the Rising Hope Food Pantry and the Yavapai Food Council. And you can find these taped interviews on Channel 2 in the Verdi Valley. And you can also find them, if you don't have cable TV, you can find them on YouTube and you type in "Verdi Valley TV." Or you can find them on verdivallietv.com. And what was your interview this month?
We did an interview with Commander Gary Isinga and our communications supervisor, Marie Carpenter, on just public safety communications in general, the new communication center that'll be under construction after the first of the year. And also our need for dispatchers. Anybody who's interested in a career in public safety, dispatching is a great way to go.
Is a good career. All right. Great. Since our last council meeting on December 6th, I attended the Larry Green Open House and Ribbon Cutting for the new Hyundai building. And he's been in business for 20 years. And in speaking with him, he said that they were able to hire a lot of local contractors for their project. But it was, it's really a beautiful building and Cottonwood can be proud of it. Of course, on December 7th, we had the Christmas Parade, the Chocolate Walk, the Cottonwood Village Open House, Verdi Valley Voices, the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony. And so I was running around all day trying to make events. And on the 8th, I attended the EF Productions Celebration of Christmas. And it's just amazing to see the amount of local talent that we have that puts on these shows with beautiful costumes. And of course, everybody that has heard about the live camel. And again, we just have so much talent that we should appreciate. Staff, Mayor, and Councilmember Garrison met with the Crestview homeowners on December 9th for council members who weren't able to make it. Staff was there. Thank you to the city manager and everyone for being there to help with questions. We gave updates on the 12th Street process. And then we also discussed the traffic on Crestview, which staff has been spending quite a bit of time trying to mitigate the community's issues. And then they, we also answered questions about their interest in having some of the larger stores move to Cottonwood. And they would like to see Targets, Target Kohl's Loews, as well as specialty establishments such as Trader Joe's and the Olive Garden Restaurant. And we did explain that it's all based on their marketing that they do and the number of customers that they can serve. So we know that Casey Rooney is working constantly to try to market the area. And we also had a youth commission meeting where the youth would love to have bowling alley and theater. So Casey is, and the city manager are working on some of their issues too. And we asked the youth to help us, to write letters to various business owners, asking them to come to Cottonwood. We have been working with various organizations, other municipalities, Supervisor Thurman of Yavapai County, the Prescott National Forest State Parks, and Friends of the Verdi River Greenway to discuss the String of Pearls concept. And the String of Pearls, if you haven't heard that term yet, it's a model that they have in Grand Junction, Colorado. And it's where each community might have a pearl. And it's all to do with like the Verdi River, the Verdi Front. And so you would have a pearl in Clarkdale. You might have one at Tapco. You might have one at their new Tuzi Goot Wrap, which is River Access Point. Then of course, Cottonwood Riverfront Park would be a pearl. You have moved down, there's eight access points between here and Camp Verde. Camp Verde would be a pearl, so you kind of get the idea as you're trying to market the area, you know, as, for people to come and enjoy the river, enjoy the environment and that sort of thing. Okay, so the next thing I did, oh, I've been to multiple year-end meetings that I attend for public safety personnel retirement of the state of Arizona. And I also attended the Alternate Pension and Benefit Plan Board of Directors. And just to let the council know, the Board of Directors voted to disband this trust and the reason being, 20 years ago, you know, we had a lot of volunteers in the fire department. Folks would just take off from their jobs and go fight fires. And now with all of the requirements and rules for firefighting and EMTs, you have fewer people that are wanting to be volunteers because it just takes so much more time. So we've had this program for many years, but it's not drawing in the volunteers. So of course, with those steep requirements, as I said, the pension plan languishes. And so our next step, the board decided, was to look for legal advice on what to do with the funds. And then of course, the final decision will be the council's. So this will come to the council at some point in the future. On Saturday, I did participate in Shop With a Cop and it's a regional event. It's just, I think that, does Sergeant Colt manage it or?
Sergeant Colt along with Detective from the FIC County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Co-run it.
Okay. So we have two co-members who manage it. But that is so great to see all of the cops and all of the children, the kids and the cops all have the same great smiles. The kids start out with breakfast. I think Brandy's, does Brandy's furnish that? So there's so many cooperative people in the Verdi Valley. And then they go to the airport. So they get in the cars and the cars are all lit up and you can imagine what small children think of that. It's pretty exciting. And once they get there, the Verdi Valley Medical Center, their Guardian Angel helicopter goes to the North Pole, picks up Santa, and brings him to the airport. So Santa hops out of the helicopter and all of the children run up and talk to Santa, get their picture taken with him. From there, they hop in the cop cars again with their cop because each child is assigned a police officer, a sheriff, or game and fish participates, state parks. It's quite a collaborative process. And then with the lights going, they go to Walmart. And Walmart is a wonderful partner in this event also. The children shop and they check out their gifts. Then they go to the back room, the employees lounge of Walmart, and the Mingus Cheerleaders, all of the explorers, which are the young police department explorers, they help wrap presents and help the cops with the kids. And have I missed anybody, Chief?
No ma'am.
That participates? So it really is, it's a wonderful event. And for those community members that support this event because it's a nonprofit, is that correct? Shop With a Cop. And so if, by gift giving, our residents allow this activity to take place. So everybody's involved and we thank you. Let's see. On Wednesday, the 18th, there will be a Cottonwood Modern Dentistry, Every Kid's Dentist Ribbon Cutting on December 18th at 11:00 AM. This is, I guess where the old Arby's is. Okay. And it's across from the Home Depot. So if you'd like to welcome them to the community, you could attend that ribbon cutting. And I had 100, my 101-year-old great aunt from Sierra Vista just passed away. And she was born in Jamaica and raised in Panama. And in the 50s, we lived next door. My Uncle Bill met her in Panama and married her and brought her back to the States. And she was a naturalized citizen and very proud of that. And my dad's Uncle Bill Ballantyne, as I said, met her and married her when stationed in Panama. And I have so many great memories as a child of my Aunt Vi. So just to let everybody know, I'll be gone a few days and that's why. Okay, that's my report for this council meeting.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes.
I did miss one.
Okay, Mr. Pratt?
On Friday at noon, I met with the Chamber of Commerce to celebrate the one-year anniversary of a local business that I think has added a lot to the community and that would be Orion Flower Garden Cafe. They, a lot of businesses didn't seem to last long there, but they've done well. And so we had the one-year anniversary.
Wonderful. That's excellent. And so the Flower Garden, they do a lot of.
Gluten-free.
Gluten-free.
Very healthy food.
Gluten-free is the term.
Served with love.
Right. And local foods and that sort of thing. Right. So if you're into gluten-free and other cuisines, they're a great place and just any kind of.
And there are some interesting metal sculptures out there too.
Great. All right. So the next item is introduction of new employees. We have Emily Reed and Danny. I will let you help me learn to pronounce that.
Figaroa, Madam Mayor.
Figaroa?
Figaroa.
Figaroa.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Chief?
Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you. First, I'd start off with introducing Emily Reed, which is standing here to my left. She started with the Cottonwood Communications Center in November of this year. Prior to joining the police department, she worked at a doctor's office in Sedona for six years. Emily is a Cottonwood native or Verdi Valley native, attending the Cornerstone Christian Academy in Cottonwood. Then she studied at Boise State Idaho. Emily and her husband, John, have been married for seven years and live in Cornville. John, however, was recently hired by the Sedona Police Department, but can't have everything. Emily and John share their home with two Great Danes. Emily enjoys the outdoors and her hobbies, including camping and off-roading. Emily is excelling at the Cottonwood Police Department, learning the job very quickly. And I do mean very quickly. The reports I keep getting are extremely high on her. She's a remarkable addition to the police department. We're very happy to have her as part of the mission team. I present you Emily Reed.
And would you like to address the council?
No, I'm good.
Okay. We just like toss you into public speaking immediately, right?
First day they threw me into the city picture, so I'm okay.
Okay. All right.
She talks a lot on the radio, don't worry.
Okay. That's important.
Next is Danny Figaroa. Danny was, and.
Mila?
Mila. She doesn't patrol with us, but Danny does. Danny was born in Mission Hills, California in 1982. His mother, Letty, and father Hector Figaroa. He's the oldest of five children with a nine-year gap between him and his siblings. Growing up, he attended Granada Hills High School in California, lettering in basketball and volleyball. He continued playing basketball at the collegiate level, attending Life Bible College for one year. While at Bible College, he decided that he had a heart for helping people in the direction of public safety was the route he wanted to take. Shortly after that, he became an EMT in 2002 and started working on a 911 ambulance covering Ventura County area. In 2010, his life was changed when he met and married his best friend, Heather Arkum. On January 2nd, almost two years later, they had their first baby, Mila. December 19th, 2011. For the past five years, he has been striving to become a police officer, which brings him to the Cottonwood, Arizona. And we were extremely happy to steal him from California. And he just recently graduated from the Police Academy in Prescott, where he excelled greatly in the physical fitness arena, barely missing out on the physical fitness award for the class, which under normal circumstances, he would have won. But Danny Figaroa.
And would you like to address the council and the public?
Yes, I would. Like Chief said, this has been my dream to be here. I want to be in this position. I cannot stand here and not thank my wife, Heather, for helping me out every step of the way. I couldn't have done it without you, babe. I want to thank Chief Fanning. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. And I thank all of you as well for giving me this opportunity. And I look to serve and protect the community of Cottonwood. It's nice being here. We've, like Chief said, we were in Prescott for the last four months and we've been here for the last two weeks and it's been awesome. It's like a small-town family. When I found out that I had to come here, I didn't, this wouldn't happen in LA. This wouldn't happen in the big city. Me, I would be standing here in front of you guys, thanking you guys for giving me this opportunity. When I found out that I was gonna be here, I didn't know if I was gonna get the key to the city already or, I didn't know that you guys were gonna name a street after me.
I should have brought one. I should have brought one.
But this wouldn't happen and this is why I'm here. And I look forward to, you know, doing the best job that I can. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We have Bruce Morrow with us this evening to talk about future cat. And if we could make this as concise as possible, we have a lot of folks standing,
Got one working. There it goes.
Madam Mayor, council. Last year, we were given the task to see what we could do with the Cottonwood area transit. We had a little bit of a funding shortfall from the county, so we were asked to deal with that. So part of what we did at that point in time was take a look at how we can shorten the Blue Line route and make it, still keep some of it available for the people that are out in the Verdi villages. And additionally, to make cat and Lynx work better together. And that's kind of what we're attempting to do.
So if someone standing by the light switch at the very back of the room can just catch the front lights, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Many of you have seen the buses out there. There's our buses. Cottonwood currently has two routes, two fixed routes, the red line and the blue line. And the blue line basically covers the Verdi villages and the rest of downtown Cottonwood. Red line takes Yavapai College and Clarkdale. The Lynx is our intercity commuter service between Cottonwood and Sedona. It currently runs eight times a day and it's seven days a week. Paratransit runs in conjunction with all of these routes, three-quarters of a mile around the corridor that the fixed routes run. All our buses are ADA accessible and any new buses we get will also be ADA accessible. So anybody that's in a wheelchair or has other disabilities can carry them along. Bus fares, we didn't really make any changes for next year. Still a dollar and a quarter on cat, $2 on Lynx. Big changes. We created this all-access pass that's basically good on both cat and Lynx. And it's good for as many rides as you want during the day. If you buy a monthly pass, you can ride cat and Lynx till your heart's content. We like people to use passes because it makes it easier for our drivers. You can either just punch it or just look at the pass and say, "It's good." We do take cash and sadly, we don't give change. So if you don't have correct change, we'll take whatever you have. This is what our current routes look like between the Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and the Verdi villages. Can't show it to Sedona because it's too far off the map. But this is what we're currently dealing with on a regular, day-to-day basis, Monday through Friday. This is what we're looking to do for next year. As you can see, we've got more colors. The green line is a new route in that we wanted to reclaim some of the routes and some of the bus stops that were missed when NAPDA came in and closed down the old green line. So in order to do that, we created the green line, which is primarily gonna run from Oldtown to Walmart. And it's gonna cover all the major retail establishments in Cottonwood. Along with that, because of the changes we've made to the blue line, we've added kind of this yellow line, which is basically the blue line with a few little hooks in there to also reclaim some of the territory that was lost when NAPDA took over the transit system. The blue line is now gonna run four times a day instead of 11. The first two runs in the morning at 6:45 and 7:30, and the last two runs at 5:15 and 6 o'clock. So that's kind of the way we managed to keep that for people that primarily are going to and from work. The yellow line goes out as far as the Verdi Manor and will come back through and hit Walmart a couple of times, go up by the high school, and then down 12th Street, primarily because we have a lot of passengers that are at Christian Care. And they want to be able to get on the fixed route bus rather than taking the paratransit bus. So we wanted to add that back in. bus. So, we, we wanted to add that back in. Uh, if you'll note, we've got some, some, uh, Green Line goes up 898 to Mingus and then down Mingus toward, uh, Willard. Part of that is to take advantage of the fact, we know that, that Verde Valley Guidance Center is, has obtained the building behind Maverick, and a lot of our passengers go to the Guidance Center. So, I wanted to make sure that we had a way to get them there on the fixed route. And I talked with a developer that's talking about developing some more of the, the land between Candy and Willard on Mingus. Um, so I wanted to make sure we had a bus route that went by there to take advantage of any opportunities that might come along for us to, uh, help them get people to and fro. This, I think, is gonna cover most of, of Cottonwood pretty well. We've talked with a lot of people in the community. I've talked with a lot of people on the buses, uh, between our advisory committee, our coordinating committee, and planning committee. A lot of these things were taken into consideration. Uh, Blue Line is essentially the same Blue Line we currently have. Like I say, it's only running four times a day now.
And that, I was gonna be, one of my questions is, that is, um, all the service we can provide within the $20,000 that Yavapai County pays for the service?
Exactly.
For their citizens? Okay.
Exactly. So, what I did is, in order to make up, because I really don't want to leave a driver sitting there for two hours and then, you know, eight hours waiting for the next run, I put together this, this Yellow Route. It's essentially the same as the Blue Route, but again, we added a few pieces on there that, that we reclaimed from previous routes. Uh, this will run in the interim between the first two runs and the last two runs of the Blue Line. So, it's, it's kind of a new line, but not really. The Green Route, this one, again, reclaimed some of the, the area that was lost in the, when NAPDA took over. Plus, it focuses primarily along the retail corridor, uh, Main Street, 260. Uh, it will cover, uh, again, along Cove Parkway, so we can get Maho, and some of the businesses back there again. And, uh, it will go down Mingus to cover the area when Verde Valley Guidance Center used some of their offices. So, we're, we're trying to take a look at covering all these areas. And last, our Red Line, we, we took a look at how we can make the Red Line better. Uh, worked with Clarkdale, uh, and they were quite happy with what we're doing. Uh, again, Yavapai College is, is a main focus. We've added Pine Shadows, uh, to the, to the Red Line, and now it's a closed loop. Uh, we don't go back and forth and do weird stuff. So, it's, it's a closed loop. All of these routes are gonna run in 45 minutes as opposed to an hour. So, all our service is 45 minutes, or will be. And what that does is it gives us five more runs a day to take advantage of, of moving people around. We added a, a, our last run is at 6:00, which ties in with Lynx, so that when people come in from Sedona on the Lynx at 6:00, there'll be buses there to take them wherever they need to go. The schedules, if you take a look at this, it makes sense to me. It may not make sense to you, but it, it shows pretty well what the schedules are gonna look like, uh, when you actually stand in the brochures. The, uh, Lynx and the, the cat are gonna tie pretty well about 10 times throughout the day. You'll be able to get from a Lynx bus to a cat bus. So, it's, it's a great improvement over what we currently have. Again, these are just, just more of the schedules. This is what they're gonna kind of look like when we actually get them printed. We'll loop schedule again to four runs instead of 11. That's all I have for you.
Mr. Ilinski?
We, will we be posting those, uh, routes and schedules at the bus stops?
We can. We, we haven't before, but we can certainly do that.
Okay. I think it'd be helpful, because I've, I've ridden the bus before, and it's, uh, it's not always easy to get a, a schedule. And I thought it might be nice just to have them posted. I've heard that from other folks, too.
Well, then, we'll have, we'll have them posted, you know, in the usual distribution points, you know, City Hall, uh, the library, uh, Rec Center, uh, Finance, we'll have them. We'll have them in Clarkdale at, at the City Hall there. Um, we have them in Sedona, uh, just about everywhere in Sedona. So, there, there's a lot of places where they'll, they will be available.
I would just like to see us consider maybe mounting them, too, at the bus stops. I think it's a natural place for people to look for the schedule.
We can certainly look into that. I don't know what it'll take, because we don't currently have anything out there.
Mr. Delling, did you want to speak?
I think you may run, I, I think, I'm on the, the Transportation Advisory Committee or whatever. I think that's been mentioned possibly, but there's always issues with vandalism. But, yeah.
What a lot of cities do is they'll, they'll mount them up high, so folks can't vandalize. They can still read them, but they can't crawl. It'd be more difficult to crawl up there. You'd have to really want to vandalize it.
That's right.
But then, you have to have the vision like you have. You can't have a vision like I have.
We could have binoculars at every station.
I don't know if that's in my budget, but I can ask.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the council or comments from members of the public on this item? Yes, ma'am? If you would come up to the, because of, and the reason that we ask you to come to the lectern to speak is because, um, when they're transcribing the minutes, they're not able to transcribe them if they can't hear you.
Hi, Catherine Puerta, and my question is, where can the monthly passes be purchased? My understanding was there was only four places that they can be purchased, but are you gonna have additional places now?
Monthly passes can be purchased at the, uh, library, at the Rec Center, at the Finance Department, and in our offices. Plus, we're, we're going to have them available at Clarkdale, at the Town Hall, and we have them available in Sedona, um, primarily at the Finance Office in Sedona.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can always, if, if you have a request for a pass, you can always mail us your request. We can mail that out to you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Bruce. And great work.
Thanks.
And I'd just like to reiterate again that Cottonwood having transportation is probably the only, are we the only small town in Arizona that has such a transportation system?
We are one of the few.
One of the few.
We're, we're the only, uh, city of our size between Phoenix and Flagstaff that has any type of transportation.
Mm-hmm. Including Prescott and...
Including Prescott.
Okay. And then we're going to have another item a little bit later, talking about, um, joining together the whole Verde Valley with the Yavapai Apache Nation, and so, um, I'm looking forward to hearing about that. The next, okay, um, I would just like to also, um, raise the consent agenda up to the next item if the council, if it, um, if the council is okay with that. And, um, mainly, we have Casey that lives out of town, and it would be nice to get him home at a decent hour tonight. So, um, I would move to item number X, Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments for the Yavapai County Business Assistance Center. Item number two is Resolution Number 2728, reappointing Mark Hobson as a member of the Municipal Property Corporation and establishing his new term of office. Are there any items that a member of the council would like to pull for discussion? Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Oh, okay. And we need to, um, City Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2728 by title only.
Resolution Number 2728, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Mark Hobson a member of the city's municipal property corporation. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. So, if it's not on tonight's agenda, this is your time to talk about it. The council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. We have, um, Lanny, Lonnie, Lonnie Wyatt would like to speak about sidewalk driveway maintenance.
Can you hear me okay? I have a carrying voice.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, thank you. Whoever has to try to transcribe me, I wish them all the luck in the world, because my disease is taking all my teeth out also. When there'll be some time. Um, I did my best last week, but I had the flu and decided not to infect everybody, so I did not come. Uh, I am in constant contact with Morgan Scott, whom I have lived here 19 years and have very seldom been so impressed with someone who is actually listening and getting things done. I almost went to tears when I saw them, uh, patching the sidewalk at Giant in preparation to truly fix it. Uh, this evening, I rode my chair. I live over, uh, 16th and Elm in the Crestview, where everything is named, Crestview. Um, and I rode my chair here tonight for a few reasons. One, to see if I could do it, and two, to see, do, I, I have never noticed the things that I've been bringing up because I always drove a car. And between Mingus and the turn right here, I ended up in the right lane of traffic three times, none of which thankfully there were cars, or you'd be on a different call. Um, I'm, I'm dead serious and have communicated with Morgan weekly, and I, I can't say enough good. I honestly don't remember the award he got this evening when I started coming, but he certainly deserves it. Um, I have talked to Morgan, and we're getting far enough in this as far as my photo journaling, everything as we go, um, that perhaps now is the time, and I love this part. Uh, my plan and hope is to go to the local courthouses, and hopefully, they all have an open court day still, and speak with these judges and offer another realm of community service. You know, if I had three more fingers, I'd buy the brooms. A lot of it can be taken care of by people who have, uh, community service tacked onto their fines, or who should have community service slapped on them. Um, you know, welcome to the Verde Valley. We're never gonna run out of them. So... There's a reason they don't have me on the Board of Tourism. Seriously. Um, but there's no reason that especially some of our sweet, younger offenders have no excuse why they can't go out there with a broom. If I can sit in a wheelchair and do it with my feet to get through driveway, then so can people who decide that they could just go break the law and get away free. Um, I, I live to speak to Judge Lundey about this. I'm not familiar, and did ask the name of the city judge that I'm not familiar with. I don't know if they have open court. I think Lundey has it on Tuesday, or used to. And I, do you know if they have open court date? Anybody?
Madam Mayor, I, I don't know when Judge Lasota keeps office hours, but you can certainly contact his staff.
I'll find out. And, uh, and perhaps as well out on 260 at the Big Court. All right? So, I'll find myself a couple of willing judges.
Okay. Be careful there. We'll help you. Thank you, Lonnie.
I swear, all my life, I've got great balance and just trying to learn to get in wheels.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and...
The city keeps coming back.
The city keeps continuing to work to try to help. Okay, so, um, okay, where are we? Here we go. That one, that one.
Approval Minutes.
So, are there any more comments for the public comment period that don't have anything to do with an agenda item? Okay, ma'am?
No, um, Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna cut a pass. If anybody sees me on the way home and I look stuck, pick me up.
Hello, I'm... My name's Ruth Santa. I'm with Community Legal Services, and I wanted to take this off the TV with a full house to remind everyone that Community Legal Services of Yavapai County is here to provide free legal services in the civil arena within our five service areas if anyone is interested. I do have brochures with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the services that you provide. Okay, um, just looking at item number one on the new agenda, let's...
I'm gonna approve the minutes.
I'm gonna maybe put that, move that up. Um, 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 okay. So, City Manager, how long do you think this item would take, this sign one? Can we make it fast? Is Baron here?
No, I believe Dan's here to...
Oh, Dan's here?
Yeah, to respond to that. So, he should be coming through the door any minute.
So, Ms., Mr. Dan, Mr. Luter, how long will this item take?
My car's taking about two minutes.
Okay. So, we can get this one out of here so these folks don't have to wait for a long, long time. Okay, so we're going to move up item number one on the new business and get these folks to where they can, um, not have to stay if they don't want to. to where they can, um, not have to stay if they don't want to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, current city code does not allow off-premises signs, and we've had some contact from business owners. We were approached by some business owners that believe that their businesses are severely impacted because people can't really find their restaurants or businesses. Uh, and so we started looking into the possibility of having some off-premises signs that would be regulated by the city. We've taken this through the Planning and Zoning Commission, made this presentation to them at the November 18 meeting, and the consensus of the commission was unanimous that they would appreciate this type of sign. They think it would help businesses out. Uh, this is one example of the sign we showed, Planning and Zoning. Staff's concept on this is the city would install the sign, and then the business would be responsible for procuring the individual placards, and I think it'll be a little more understandable with the next. Right now, the one area that they have requested this is in the area of Via and 89A. We've got some businesses that are back in there that really can't have off-premises signs. It's a regulated state highway. So if the council approved this item, what staff would do would be to put together some sign examples for Planning and Zoning, take it back to them, get their approval on the sign and the location, and then we could offer the businesses in the area the chance to buy an individual placard that would identify their business and give directions to get to it. The other area we talked to Planning and Zoning about where this may be beneficial is in the area of Justin and the industrial park. Again, really not more than one known way in, one known way out. So we've come to council tonight asking them if they could support this. The cost of the city would be for the, the basic sign and installation, which would probably be in the area of about $500, and then it would be a standard sign that they had to make, so we didn't have five different types of signs up there. So if, if council authorizes this, we would put it on the agenda, the actual sign itself on the agenda for the January P&amp;Z meeting, and then it could be installed after that.
Okay. So, um, any comments from members of the council, Mr. Huttig?
Just for clarification, we're just talking two sites?
Oh, right now, we're talking one site. But the way we presented this to Planning and Zoning and the way we would want to structure it is any other, any future request for other sites would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval, so we didn't have a, just a proliferation of these single signs. So right now, the only one we've presented forward to Planning and Zoning would be at Via and 89.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I, I could stand fully behind this. I, I know where the businesses are, and I know people have told me they have trouble finding a certain place in there. And we do take pride in being a business-friendly city, so I think going with a sign like this continues that philosophy, that we do support our small, locally-owned private businesses.
Mr. Elinsky?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good idea. I think we can do it tastefully as well. My only comment would be to incorporate this into the, the branding study that we're doing now, so, so we have some consistency in signage, because I think most of our signs lack consist, consistency across the city, so I'd like to see them have the same theme.
Uh, one option we could, just, just for conversation's sake, is the identifying sign in the top. We could hold off on that until the branding is done. Uh, the, the people that have requested this have been patient for about the last four months while we go through the government process.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, that's a good point, that we could wait till then, till we put the, the actual city identifier on.
Right. That's good.
I would like to, um, I would not like to wait that long because there's a great need right now to direct people to those businesses for their success and for their ongoing ability to make a living and pay sales taxes to the city. And so I would not, I mean, I think that's a great idea, and we should do that in the future, but for this particular one, I think there's a little bit of, um, an issue on, it needs to be expedited. Vice Mayor.
I believe Dan did mention, though, that we could do the sign soon and then just wait to put the topper on it.
Right.
Later.
Perfect.
After the branding, so that would be, that would be great. I think it's a wonderful idea.
That would work too. Right. And I do agree with what Terrence said, is that we do try our best to support our businesses, and there are just some that, um, through no fault of their own really have an issue with people finding them. Mr. Garrison?
I've, I've got a concern. One is that the, the, the example you're showing us tend to be high-traffic tourist destinations, and what I'm seeing us provide signage for is not. Um, you know, it, it just seems like the town's being overrun with signs, and that area in particular, Via, is already so congested with things on the street. Uh, you already have multiple signs in that area as it is, that adding another one is just gonna add more noise to the mix. So I guess my concern is, I'd love to figure out how to create better traffic flow down not only Via, but, uh, oh, what's this, what's the business street? Coke Parkway, which never has really gained a lot of traffic for some reason, but I'm not sure that the sign's gonna be the answer to doing that. Like I said, the, the problem is, is that corner is already so congested with signage to begin with. So is there some way that we could do a traffic count before the sign goes up and do one at some period of time after the sign is up to determine if the sign's actually improving traffic flow in that area and bringing traffic to that area, so that we know whether the signs are doing their job or not before we start adding more and more of them around town? You know, another, another example of a sign that doesn't seem to get a lot of notice, and it's huge, is the one at Cherry and, and 89, or Main Street. That one has a sign for a school that's two blocks, three blocks down the street. It has signs for the veterinary hospital that's all the way up at Cherry or at 12th Street. And I don't know that it, it does any good at all anymore, and that was put in way back. So I, I guess what I'm after is it just seems like we're adding more and more signs, but I don't know if they're really doing any good or they're doing the suited purpose.
Um, as far as the traffic counts, if that's council's wishes, we can do that. I respectfully disagree on the, the corner of Via and Elm being overrun with signs. Via, yes. But this would be just out of the, the, right away in the corner of Via and Elm. Uh, and the very sign you're talking about was pointed out to us very pointedly by the people who brought this in, is why did you allow this one?
Right, it's a great example.
There are some people that are seeing it. We wanted to stay away from the monument-type sign because of the cost, because you get a huge cost with a monument sign. This type of sign, if it doesn't work, the investment of the city isn't that big because we're not putting the monument sign in. That's more of a permanent structure. Uh, as I said, what we're trying to do to see what the interest is, is to keep the initial cost down and then put the cost of the panels that would go across on the individual business owners, but they would have to be matching what the city standard was.
I guess my concern goes back to how do we determine if it actually works or not?
I think the business owners will tell us that. And what we're doing is...
I'm sure if that sign wasn't there for the school or the other business owners, I, that, I mean, like you said, how do you determine that? I mean, the business owners will tell us.
Well, some of the businesses on those signs no longer exist, so you lose a business, how do you know that, you know, we gotta go in and deal with the sign as well? So that's my only concern is...
I was hoping this item wouldn't take too much time.
No, I, I understand, but I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm just concerned that we, we're adding more and more signage, more and more noise on, and that, that portion of the main street is already extremely risky as it is to drive down because of all the driveways, all the entrances, all the signs, and you've got four lanes moving very fast to make, make it to the next intersection and the next light in front of the person to your left or right. So I'm just, like I said, I, I'd love to see us figure out a way to improve the traffic to that area. I think it's an underutilized section of town commercially, and, and it shouldn't be, but I'm not sure that the sign is the way to go, and like I said, I'd love to find a way for us to determine if it, if it works or not. If it doesn't work, then we need to revisit not having them.
And as a point of clarification, this isn't something that staff came up with and went to the businesses. This was the businesses coming into the staff and saying, this is an issue. We've edited out through Planning and Zoning, and that's one reason why we want Planning and Zoning to have control over placement of future signs and what they look like, because they're very cognizant of, of what they want in signs.
Mr. Elinsky?
Uh, I, I would agree, though, that I think a traffic counter would be a good way for the city to quantify what impact, if any, has...
No, we can, we can get the traffic. I'll talk with Morgan when I go back, and if the traffic counters aren't being used, we can get them out there this week.
Okay.
But it's relatively easy.
I like that idea. It's a good idea. Okay, so we do have a citizen that wants to speak on this item. Dan Mayberry?
Madam Mayor, Council, my name's Dan Mayberry, um, and I may be coming in at the wrong time in far, as far as the sign process is concerned. But, um, we've talked to staff a little bit, and they directed us to this meeting, and that is concerning off-site signing for large subdivisions. And, uh, in doing a little investigation, um, we found that a number of cities and towns have provisions for that situation. We don't have many examples here, but we certainly do have one, and, uh, we would very much like to work with staff or have the opportunity to present a, uh, plan whereby you could have a permanent sign on a main street for a subdivision that did not face that street, and it would have to be a large subdivision. So I would just like to put in my few cents that we would love to talk to staff about.
Okay, is this something that council would direct staff to have a discussion about?
Certainly have the discussion. You never want to not have a discussion with the citizens.
And there's probably other examples and models, as you said, of other cities that might have something of that type. Mr. Garrison?
If I remember right, when Cottonwood Ranch was first being built, there, there was monument signs placed, one at Verde Heights, one at Mingus Avenue...
Yes.
That directed you into that subdivision, and, and I fully appreciated the developer trying to do that to, you know, gain some, some traffic flow and sell his lots and get it gone, but it seems like once that subdivision's built, what would be the intent of keeping, or what would be the purpose of keeping those signs there at that point?
It would go away. Most of the models that I read said that once the subdivision was like eighty percent sold out, the sign had to be removed.
So just strictly for development purposes?
Right, it was for sales purposes.
Great.
So, um, I guess the next step would be to discuss it with staff and then go to the Planning and Zoning Commission with it, and then have it, the idea go through the whole process.
Yes. Madam Mayor, we would handle, as much as we handle this business, I'm gonna take it through the staff, and then a presentation to P&amp;Z.
Okay, so anybody else want to speak on this item? Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. Okay, if not, it's just direction tonight, and it seems that, it seems like the majority of the council was shaking their head yes to move forward with this particular item for Via, with the concession that there would be a traffic count before and after the sign went up to determine, as Mr. Garrison stated, whether it does any good.
My concerns are valid.
All right, oh, it's nice to have lights. Thank you, whoever thought of that. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so, let's see. Approval of the minutes. I entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Elinsky made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, um, the next item is unfinished business, amending the municipal code by adding a new Title 16, Civil Unions, second and final reading. So as the last meeting, I would go ahead and, um, ask members of the public on hot-button issues. You know, we clap when we get new employees, and all of that's good and well, but when it comes to issues, um, sometimes folks aren't very good public speakers, and they can be intimidated from speaking, so give everybody a fair chance. So I would ask that we do not clap. I would also remind everyone of the three Rs, respect for self, respect for others, and responsible for all your own actions. And with that, we have a five-minute time limit, and I just had asked the city attorney if, um, that could be changed, and his answer was that three-fourths of the council could vote to change that. However, what I would prefer is to ask the public, what do you think? Um, we have lots and lots of, of speakers, and we could be here late into the night, but if everybody is okay with that. Um, so usually we have five minutes. Are there any members of the public who would object going to three minutes?
Seven.
Okay, one member of the public?
Is that three minutes per person?
Per person. Three minutes instead of five. Okay, so everybody's good with that? Okay, so you guys made that decision, so do we still have to vote on it?
Yes.
Yes, we still have to vote. So we would need three-quarters voters. Mr. Pratt?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
That we go to three minutes for public input on item number one under unfinished business. Per person.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and Mr. Elinsky seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so Matt will go ahead and he'll, um, register three minutes. You can do that? Your machine's not stuck on five?
No.
Okay. All right. So, um, we'll start this off with a little bit of commentary. All of the emails that I have received from you all and other members of the community, I have forwarded to the city clerk's office to be part of the public record, and we do appreciate all the comments that we received. We realize that some issues in a community, we've got lots of people who like it, lots of people who don't, and this is probably one of those issues. So everybody will be heard tonight. Everybody will get a chance to speak who wants to speak, and everyone who wrote to the council, at least to me, your email or your letter or whatever we received from you is on the public record. Okay, so this item is, um, let me get over to it. I've been skipping around so much tonight that... Okay, so this item is ordinance number 604, is Registration and Recognition of Civil Unions, Civil Unions for Certain Purposes. And I would just like to comment that, um, a couple of points here, it talks about the December 2nd meeting, and I believe that was the December 3rd meeting, so I would like to request a correction of this document to refer to December 3rd instead. So, um, this is an ordinance that would establish a registry that would allow committed couples opposite sex or same sex to register the relationship with the city clerk, to file a list or description of legal documents relating to their children, property, health, care, and other important matters between them. Um, there will be just a list of the items. Some of the communities that have approved this have taken the documents themselves, but those documents then would become a public record, and, um, the council in their work session and their meetings felt that it would be, um, much better just to give a list of items that the couple would feel were important to them. Okay, so are there any comments? We've discussed this a couple of times in the public, um, realm of work session and our first reading on December 3rd. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things before we start and hear a lot of comments. One thing is, I want to remind everyone that at the beginning of this meeting, we all
One thing is, I want to remind everyone that at the beginning of this meeting, we all cited a pledge that ended with the words, "With liberty and justice for all." I'll repeat that. Liberty and justice for all, not just for a few people. As well as, you know, after the last meeting, I did a lot of research, and people had referred to our forefathers and said they didn't envision this. Well, most historians, the vast majority, would tell you our forefathers were really deists, which is much different than some modern-day Christians. And that they based, it was the Age of Enlightenment, they based their decisions on reason, not their faith. Even though many of them had faith, they realized faith couldn't enter into decisions that affected all of our citizens. And I'd like to read something to you. And I do respect everyone's faith. Because religious belief or non-belief is such an important part of every person's life, freedom of a religion affects every individual. Religious institutions that use government power in support of themselves and force their views on persons of other faiths or of no faith undermine all of our civil rights. Moreover, state-supporting and established religion tends to make the clergy unresponsive to their own people and leads to corruption within religion itself. Erecting the wall of separation between church and state, therefore, is absolutely essential in a free society. That is a quote from Thomas Jefferson, one of our forefathers that everybody referred to. They recognized that faith could not enter the public arena to make decisions for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. No, please, please. Thank you for being respectful. When we're all done with everything, we'll all clap, okay? All right. Thank you. Any other comments from members of the council before we ask the public to share their thoughts?
Go ahead and move on, please. Ready to move on.
Okay. So if council members are ready to move on, we will start the discussions. And I have Jay Parkinson from Cornville as our first speaker.
Second three minutes to get up there?
Pardon me? Okay, the next person is Jack Pease. Thank you, that's a great idea. Yes, Mr. Parkinson?
All right, thank you, council members and Madam Mayor. I'll be brief and to the point, so hopefully I can cover all of my points. In reviewing this, or last time I was here, I expressed my opposition to the amendment of this, going through the ordinances it's proposed. I have issues with it. Mr. Pratt, you told us that you felt we're a business-friendly city or gaining that reputation. But at the same time, you're talking about trying to codify what ordinances are with private businesses that are inside the city. I don't think that's the government's place to be codifying ordinances with private business. It also states costs, non-applicable, that there's no costs with this. Well, we know that's not true. There's time, efficiency, motion. We've got forms being created, we've got paperwork being done. There are costs associated with this. Come on. When we go down to, for the purpose of chapter two, neither person of them in a marriage expressly recognized by the state of Arizona, blah, 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 domestic partnerships, are we going to be subject to civil suits? Why not polygamy? Because, or why not multiple civil unions? If you're saying this isn't a marriage, then why not civil unions? What's to stop the city? Are you going to be sued for discrimination if someone wants multiple partners in a civil union situation? Let's see.
Actually written into it?
That's City Administrator Bartosz. He talked about in here, for the purpose of the chapter, each of them is competent to enter into a contract under the laws of Arizona. Who on your staff is qualified to determine competency of people that are applying or filing for this? Is there someone on staff that's going to determine competency? Let's see, let me find my number here. We speak about agreements between parties won't be lodged, other sorts of agreements, but then we have six F, I believe, or no, F. As part of the registration statement, the parties to a civil union may include a statement describing their shared intentions. Well, shared intentions are an agreement. You just said previously, there were six points where they weren't going to file their agreement with the city. So what is the difference? This is double talk. As far as issuance of civil union certificates, I see no protections offered. We talked about liberty and justice for all. I don't see provisions made for city employees that may have a hard time in their personal beliefs with not wanting to issue this, this being incompatible with their personal beliefs. I see no provision made here. So does that subject your city employees to disciplinary action or termination because they don't see fit to follow along with this? What is it? I don't see this addressed. And I would just ask that this go to the people and be put on the ballot and allow democracy to take its course. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Pease? Reverend Pease? Is it Reverend officially?
Yeah.
Okay, Reverend Pease?
My name is Jack Pease, City Council. Mayor, thank you for the privilege we have of being able to be here today. It's a great privilege and honor. But I thank you for my opportunity to object to the proposed ordinance 604. Pastor Frank of the Emmanuel Church asked in the December 3rd meeting if he would be sued when he refused to perform a civil union ceremony. His question should be asked, this question should be asked by newspapers, churches, and whatever else. All are in danger of harassment or being sued when they disagree with the gay agenda. Under justification, benefits, and issues of the 604 ordinance, it says, does not require anyone to alter or compromise their beliefs. And again, this is only true if they do not oppose the gay agenda in any way. Canada is a good case study. Printers, newspapers, religious organizations were fined thousands of dollars when they refused to compromise their biblical religious beliefs to accommodate the homosexual demands. The newspaper, the week of ninth, or the news, rather, week of the ninth, told about a bakery in Colorado who refused to make a cake for a homosexual wedding. He would not compromise his faith. The judge says, bake the cake or go to jail. Good decision. Although the term, that's, doesn't mean that's good here, but it means a good choice. He really gave him, didn't he? Although the term civil union is not used in this document, my understanding that this is really the issue and the basis of 604. Illinois Representative Monique Davis, an African-American, was asked by the Sun-Times, is same-sex marriage a civil rights issue? She said, have they ever hung from a tree? Have they spent 500 years as slaves? Then I don't think so. The issues are not equal. Simple as that. End quote. In the December 3rd meeting, the statement was made that the civil union action would be looked upon in years to come as a good thing. The action was compared to the freedom of African-Americans and women's right to vote. I agree with the freedom and civil rights for the African-American and the women's rights to vote. That is a very good thing. However, I do disagree that the destruction of God's definition of marriage and thousands of years of traditional values will be looked up as a good thing. What this does is open up a door for any kind of marriage arrangements. We see it starting with the judge who says, it's already all right for a man to have four wives. And that's just recently. Just because something is legal does not make it right or moral. I ask that this be put on the ballot for people to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Pease. Al Pivnik, and then next is Carla Hoover?
I live here in Cottonwood, been here for 10 years. And it touches home pretty good because I have a daughter who happens to be gay. And when that first came to our wives in my presence, we were kind of surprised, we were kind of questioning how this happened. But as we realized, this is our flesh and blood. And as flesh and blood, you try and make it happen to the point that, what did you do right? What did you do wrong? And maybe we are wrong. Maybe we are thinking wrong. And my wife and I got very, very close to this and then realized that we have to adjust our thinking. We are not in an archaic society anymore. In reality, there are archaic communities in this country. There are archaic communities that still live by the past of 50 or 100 years ago. Hopefully, Cottonwood is not one of them. Do not let our heads be buried in the sand, folks. We are a very, very progressive, progressive community. We have new businesses. We have wonderful restaurants. We have people from other parts of this state that come here because they've heard about certain things in this community that they would like their community to be like. It is a very unified community, I hope. We must go forward, as did Jerome, Clarkdale, Sedona, and many, many other areas throughout, not only the state, but throughout the country. Don't be thinking old school. Let's be realistic and be proud of this town and pass this ordinance with no more controversy.
Thank you, Mr. Pivnik. Okay, after Carla Hoover is Greg Lucky.
Hi, I'm Carla Hoover. I live in Verdi Village. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing us. I have lived and worked in this community for almost 20 years. I raised my children here. One of the reasons we moved to this community was the diversity of so many cultures, so many people blended together. It's one of the reasons I stay in this community, because of the welcoming it would get. As a member of the LGBT community, I am in total support of this ordinance. It's important that the things that we're talking about in this ordinance are recognized for the protection of all families, no matter what the configuration of that family. As a daughter of a retired minister, I understand that people are very passionate about their faith, but that debate has no place here. I would even work on a panel if somebody wants to debate it at a later, later place, different, different place, later time. I would like to thank the council members and the mayor for honoring the separation of church and state, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Okay, after Greg is David Codino?
Good morning.
If I said that right?
Thank you all for this opportunity. I'm Greg Lucky. I live in Sedona, but I'm also a small business owner with an office here in Cottonwood. As past president of Sedona Verdi Valley Pride, I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the city for the support of our organization and the LGBT community at large. Last September's festival drew over 800 attendance during the day, and I know was a positive factor financially and socially for the city. Allowing us to host our event in Old Town showed that the city of Cottonwood is a community that welcomes diversity and encourages visitors from all walks of life. Tonight's discussion about potentially allowing civil unions is a civil rights issue, period. Civil unions have no religious basis nor any effect on any religious institution. Any fear of this ordinance is unfounded and based on a lack of knowledge, misinformation, or in the worst case, flat-out lies and distortion of the truth. The formal acknowledgement of a civil union by two persons specified to, gay or straight, who are in a committed relationship, establishes a public record of their intentions to remain together as a couple. The very limited protections provided by the civil union registration are beneficial, but by no means can be considered marriage. My husband and I have our civil union registered in Sedona, and to the best of my knowledge, I haven't seen fire and brimstone coming down yet.
Thank you very much. After David is Priscilla Harden.
Good evening. My name is David Gardner-Niel, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Sedona Verdi Valley Gay Pride Board of Directors. We want to thank the council and the mayor for introducing legislation that minimizes discrimination against same-sex couples. We are also in support of civil unions for all unmarried couples. This is important due to the medical facilities that's available here in Cottonwood. We don't see this as a moral issue, but rather one of discrimination. So thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. After Priscilla Harden is Susan Hughes.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Priscilla Harden, and while I live in Clarkdale, I eat, drink, shop, drive, go to galleries in Cottonwood. I love this town. I come through this town at least once a day, and I love coming through here, and I shop here. And this is where it feels like the heart of my life is. I've listened to speakers in these meetings voice concerns and support for this ordinance, and I appreciate you giving all persons the opportunity to speak. This ordinance isn't about approving gay marriage. It isn't about a particular religion or God. It isn't about reducing privacy or increasing bureaucracy. It isn't about AIDS or who's living with whom. It applies to opposite-sex couples as well as same-sex couples. It isn't even about whom people choose to love or hate. But I agree with those who fear the slippery slope of allowing certain behaviors to become the custom, either by law or just by looking the other way. When we as a community allow inequity to exist, when we decline to speak for the rights of every citizen to be treated equally, we send a message to everyone that discrimination is okay. That is a slippery slope. When I was a child, there were two water fountains in stores, not the short one for short people and disabled people, and the tall one for taller people, grown-ups. But it was for white people and colored people. And that's what I grew up with. Colored people sat in the back of the bus, the movie theaters, went to different schools, used different stairways and dishes in homes they worked in. And it was okay because not enough people stood up for their rights just because they looked different. That was a slippery slope because it became okay to bully them, torture, and kill those who were different, whom people feared just might be given equal rights. How soon before I'm told I should drink out of separate fountains, stick to my own kind and not mingle, be hospitalized in separate wards or unable to be visited by my loved ones, or wear easily identifiable symbols on my clothing to warn others of my differentness? The CEO of Apple Company recently received a lifetime achievement award from Auburn University. He talked about growing up in the South, seeing crosses burned on lawns, and people discriminated against for many reasons. He urged listeners to never allow the majority to limit the rights of the minority. Never allow people who fear anyone different from themselves to limit others' human rights or deny others' human dignity. As a mother, a grandmother, and a spouse, as a family therapist, and as a friend and neighbor, I've worked hard to help heal the wounds caused by falling down those slippery slopes. I honor and thank this council for considering passing this ordinance, which recognizes relationships people have freely entered into and hold out a hand to help people, all of us, from being buried at the bottom of the slippery slope.
Thank you very much. Susan Hughes, and then Deana and Dan? Deana and Dan, I can't understand. What is your last name?
Deana Danquitt.
Thank you. Okay, you're next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council of Cottonwood. My name is Susan Hughes. Not only am I here this evening as the proud mother of a gay son, but I am also the president of Sedona, PFLAG Sedona Verdi Valley, and I did leave you all a brochure. We have members from Cottonwood, Clarkdale, Cornville, Camp Verdi, and Sedona in our chapter. In these capacities, I am here to encourage the Cottonwood City Council to adopt an ordinance recognizing civil unions for same-sex couples similar to those in Bisbee, Tucson, Jerome, Sedona, and Clarkdale. PFLAG, parents, families, and friends of lesbians and gays, started in the mid-'70s and is a national support organization of family members and friends of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. PFLAG also provides support to and advocates for the LGBT community. Our goal is to create a healthy, tolerant, local community that celebrates diversity and respects every person. We dispel negative myths about LGBT people and communicate the truth about our loved ones. ones. We further aim to promote the understanding of LGBT people as healthy, normal, responsible, productive, loving, and caring human beings. We educate our community to promote greater acceptance and respect for LGBT persons. We advocate in a grassroots fashion for equal rights, not special rights, for our relatives and friends. In addition to speaking on behalf of PFLAG, I speak as a mother and a lifelong Christian. Although much religious-based rhetoric has been offered into the record against this ordinance, this is not a religious issue. This is a civil rights issue. A church doesn't issue licenses for marriage or civil unions. Your local jurisdiction does that. For those who would hold the Bible up as a basis for denying civil rights, particularly for those who call themselves Christian, I would ask you how many times Jesus stood up and encouraged folks to deny civil rights to certain groups or classes of people. In reality, both Jesus and the prophets of the Old Testament were champions of the underdog and advocated strongly for justice for those who were unfairly discriminated against. It should not matter to anyone in this room what my spouse and I do behind closed doors. It should matter to all of you that I be allowed to take care of my spouse, the person that I love, and to make decisions for my spouse, should he, she be incapable of making those decisions. In my personal situation, that is no problem because I'm legally married to my husband of thirty-six years. But if your soulmate was lying in a hospital near death, and you are told that you cannot see them, let alone make any necessary decisions to provide for their care because you have no legal standing, that's just wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, Dina and Dan are next, and then the next one is Mark Lucky.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council of Cottonwood. Thank you for bringing the issue of civil unions to a vote. My name is Dina Dantowitz, and I've lived in the Verdi Valley area for five years now. No matter where I've lived, Camp Verdi, Old Town Cottonwood, or now Cornville, I've always come to Cottonwood for entertainment, donating to or volunteering for charities and shopping. I like the people of Cottonwood. I like that they are down-to-earth, practical, and kind. And I again thank you, council members, for supporting the civil unions ordinance. I'm in favor of the civil unions ordinance, and I appreciate you remembering the importance and necessity of the separation of church and state. And I appreciate the recognition of this issue as not one of religious morality, but one of human rights and civil rights. And in closing, I'd like to say that I look forward to the day when, no matter what physical body we are born into, we are all considered equal in the eyes of the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark, and then Charles Barrett after that.
Hi, Madam Mayor, distinguished council members. My name is Mark Lucky. I am a resident of Sedona, but I do do business in Cottonwood and the entire Verdi Valley as a real estate agent. I have called the area home for over seven years. I wanted to personally thank the council and the mayor for taking up the issue of civil unions. It is an issue that is very near and dear to my heart. When the civil unions ordinance is voted and passed, Cottonwood will stand among the cities in Arizona that have been brave enough to approach this issue. Civil unions are not, by any stretch, marriage equality. They do, however, add a layer of protection to those who choose not to or are not legally allowed to get married under the current Arizona state constitution. Marriage equality will come. This is not an issue of religious belief. This is not an issue of religious persecution. This is not a free pass for anyone to get sued for not providing services based on their religious beliefs. This is simply a register of intention between two parties. It will also provide protection to the registrants if one partner is unable to answer for medical needs. I was raised in a very strict Catholic family. My father was studying to be a priest when he met my mother, the Methodist. They could not get married in the Catholic Church until my mother converted, although both Catholic and Methodist fall under the umbrella of Christian faith. This is discrimination. I was taught the Bible, went to Sunday School, sang in the choir. I was taught that God loved everyone, that we were all children of God, that God didn't make mistakes, and that sometimes God gave people the gift of suffering to help improve them as a human being. Yet everywhere I went, I heard discriminatory remarks about how different everyone was because of the color of their skin, their religious life, and worst of all, the people who they loved. I found this very hypocritical. When I was sixteen, I finally found the courage to tell a very close friend of mine that I was gay. Then I had the courage to tell others. I was not the only gay kid in my high school, but I sure felt alone most of the time. When I turned eighteen, I moved out of my parents' house, took a year off between high school and college, worked and traveled. I had a boyfriend, and I finally told my parents that I'm gay. That was almost thirty years ago. My parents and I do not have conversations. I have not been invited to their house for Thanksgiving or Christmas in twenty-five years. They do not want to discuss my life, and they did not come to my wedding, even though I invited them. My parents discriminate against me because of who I am, yet they raised me to be a loving, giving, nurturing man who deserves happiness. I have heard in these various chambers the type of discrimination that people feel for the homosexual, from both sides of the issue actually, and how people feel about religious. It saddens me to even be having this discussion on who is worthy enough to have basic rights. No one in this room knows that it is like to live a homosexual lifestyle other than the homosexual, and frankly, it's no one's business. My life, and my life of my husband, is no different than anyone here. We get up in the morning, have coffee, discuss plans for the day, go to work, eat lunch, have dinner together as a family. We talk about our day, our dreams, we plan travel, pay bills, do laundry, clean house, walk the dogs. It's a good life, and even better because I have someone to share it. The civil unions ordinance is important. Did I, did it buzz? I'm so sorry.
Do you, you wanna?
I got lost.
Or do you wanna like, you could wrap it up if you wanted to.
I just, I just want to thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Charles Barrett, and after that is Rose Berry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council of Cottonwood. My name is Charles Barrett. My domestic partner of more than twenty-four years, Randy Ayers, and I reside on Page Springs Road near the wineries, around the corner from the fish hatchery, along with my parents, on a property that my grandparents, Louis and Margaret Jekyll, purchased in nineteen-fifty as a weekend getaway. Randy works as a sales associate at the Cottonwood Walmart Supercenter, even as I speak, and is thus unable to join us this evening. My family and Randy's are well-educated, enlightened, and loving people. His family loves me as family unconditionally, as my family does he. Neither family would interfere with our access to one another in the event of hospitalization or other life-threatening circumstances, should we be rendered unable to speak on our own behalf. But not everyone in the lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgendered community has the luxury of such a loving and enlightened family unit backing them, looking out to honor their wishes should they be unable to communicate them to caregivers, doctors, or the authorities themselves. It is for precisely that reason that recognition of civil unions is imperative and not legally superfluous, as some in opposition have argued. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm wearing my garden t-shirt, too. Cottonwood Community Garden.
Okay, Rose Berry, and then Jaylon Peters.
Hi, my name is Rose Berry, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to address one thing to Mr. Pratt. I too know a lot about the founding fathers. I know the Constitution. I know the Arizona Constitution and the statutes of the state of Arizona. Right now, I am going to read to you a letter that was sent to me to read to you by our legislature representative, Bob Thorpe. He asked me to address you, and so I will read this to you. Dear Cottonwood City Council members, Mayor Diane Jones, Vice Mayor Karen Pfeiffer, Councilwoman Tim Alinsky, Councilwoman Jessie Dowling, Councilwoman Randy Garrison, Councilwoman Ruben.
Aldigee.
Yes, and Terrence Pratt. My office has contacted, was contacted by Cottonwood residents who are also in my LD6 constituents, who are deeply concerned with a scheduled December seventeenth, twenty-thirteen vote by your city council with regard to civil unions. Ordinance 604, amending the city code to provide for a new Title XVI Civil Unions. I am writing to, I am not writing to debate the pros and cons or moral implications of civil unions. However, I need to remind the council that the language of your ordinance may place Cottonwood in legal conflict with Arizona state statute, as we recently saw in the case when the Arizona Attorney General threatened legal action against the city of Bisbee due to its civil union vote. Prior to your vote, the council needs to determine whether this is an accepted and appropriate function of city government and whether you are solving an actual recurring problem. The laws that are already in place provide the legal privileges and protections of the marriage for unmarried couples. Many U.S. citizens across the nation have voiced their consternation when activist courts or government officials have attempted to redefine long-established social norms. Are the council's actions warranted and necessary, and do they actually fall under the jurisdiction of the typically accepted functions, duties, and responsibilities of an elected representative Arizona City Council? It is not the right of an elected city, county, or state official to take it upon themselves to create new social institutions or to redefine long-established social institutions. If civil unions are an extremely important issue for Cottonwood citizens, then each citizen's right of self-governance must be upheld, and they must be given the opportunity to decide this issue by directly voting for or against civil unions at the ballot box.
Thank you very much.
I would like to submit this so that you can put it in the records along with your other emails.
It's already, it's already in the records.
Thank you.
I received the letter, so it's in the records. Thank you. Reverend Peters?
Yes.
And the next person will be Christine Barag?
Barrick.
Barrick? Okay, Barrick.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak again. I spoke last time on December third, and my name's Jalen Peters. I live in Clarkdale. I'm a pastor here in Cottonwood, at Cottonwood Christian Assembly, although I represent my own views tonight and the opinions of my family. I just had a quick question. Can people under eighteen speak if they aren't voters here tonight?
That's a difficult question.
Because I have some teenagers that are in opposition as well who...
And Madam Mayor, there is, the Parents' Bill of Rights requires, with respect to the filming, the, the parents' consent before the child can be filmed.
So if they turn off the cameras, they can speak?
If we turn off the cameras, the people at home.
Can't see.
Can't see, and that's, that is the reason that we didn't, didn't...
Well, I'll just kind of, I don't know if it holds any water, but there are teenagers all over Cottonwood who are opposed to this, the future of Cottonwood and the decisions that you guys make today. So just so you know that, if they can't speak unless they get parents' consent, then just, just know that there are a lot that would want to be here and speak, and some even here tonight. I just had a question, like, why are we here? Why are we even discussing this? Because I feel, through discernment, that you guys already have your vote in place. So I would say either let's go to a vote of the people, the way it should be, in, in our society, as a democracy, or just vote and save us the trouble because it's hot in here. Because I feel like we're just wasting time, to be honest with you, by the words before and, and by Mr. Pratt. And I just wanted to clear things up. I've heard it spoken about and, and brought to our attention that Jesus did stand up for the injustice of people and even go to, going to, as far to overturn tables in righteous anger, and he did not sin, which I, I agree with. You can be angry and not sin. It's possible. But I did want to read something of his own words, just to clear the air, in Mark, Chapter seven, verse twenty, since we are discussing Jesus and religion and how he supports this type of lifestyle. This is his own words, and then he added, is it, "It is what comes from inside you that defiles you, from within. Out of a person's heart come evil thoughts, sexual immorality, theft, murder, adultery, greed, wickedness, deceit, lustful desires, envy, slander, pride, and foolishness. All these vile things come from within. They are what defile you." My question is, what makes wrongs? Why do we have laws? Where do those laws come from? Is that something that can be answered by a council member tonight? Where do our laws come from? Does anybody know that?
We know that, but really, it's not your place to question us.
They're, they're based out of morality from the word of God. Adultery is wrong, right? And we would agree that. So in a homosexual civil union, them to cheat on their partner is wrong, right? So my, my question is just, you know, wrong is wrong, and we get our laws from the Bible, so let's stick with that, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, be respectful, he has a right to his opinion.
Council members, my name's Christine Barrick.
And after Christine is Pam Clark. Okay, so Christine, go right ahead.
My name's Christine Barrick. Some of my credentials had been where you're sitting. I'm the ex-Vice Mayor Jerome. I ran the president, I was the president of the Jerome Chamber of Commerce for a number of years. I'm a City of Cottonwood resident, and I'm a straight ally. I'm third generation to this Verdi Valley, and this time I've seen and been a part of many changes. Last year, I had a bout with cancer. My partner and I had some tough decisions to make. These are decisions that I would hope nobody has to go through, but they would be able to make these decisions on information and be able to follow through without any ready, red tape holding up these decisions. My situation, we would have had hardships based on how things are set today. My partner and I are not married, but we have been in a loving relationship and been raising a child for five years. I was very fortunate in my situation and did not have to face the things that some people have to face when they have a disease like this, like medical decisions, funerals, and other tough decisions along the same lines. That being said, I would still like to have the ability, just like everyone else, in that my partner and I could work together to face these decisions without an opposition to us when it comes down to what, what we would like to do. Supporting of civil unions in this city makes for a viable and thriving community. We have business owners, consumers, families, and in general, loving and supportive community members that give and care about this community without asking anything in return. Should not matter their sexual preference when making this decision. We are asking for everyone to have the same human rights regardless of gender, race, or sexuality. City of Cottonwood council members, I appreciate you bringing this, and I hope you make the right decision and pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after Pam Clark is Jen Morris.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name's Pam Clark. I've lived in Cottonwood for fifty years. I love my home. It's part of the Verdi Valley. It's part of the United States. The United States Constitution guarantees equality for everybody, and I am very honored that this town is moving this ordinance forward, that it's even on the table, because my family is either dead or moved away, and if something happens to me, I need, I need for my soulmate to be able to speak on my behalf and make decisions on my behalf. I love the man. I am a soulmate, too, and I need that, and I need to be able to provide that for him as well. This is not about homosexuality. This is not about religion. This country is not a theocracy. This is about just equality, equality for everyone, and being able to take care of the ones you love equal across the board. And I really applaud the ordinance being on the table, and I hope it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jen Morris, and the next speaker is Sam Hightower.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Jen Morris, I've lived in Cottonwood for about twenty-eight years now, and very short and sweet. I got to speak last time at our meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pratt, for your opening. That was great. And Jesse, last time, you said you were here to be the voice of the people that can't speak. Man, that was great. Chokes me up. So I thank you. And I'm really just here to thank you guys for listening and bringing it to the table. And I am in favor for it. And that's all I wanted to say, so thank you.
You're welcome. After Sam Hightower is Darrell Smith. So if Darrell wants to go ahead, we'll catch Sam later when he gets, if he gets here. And after that is Joellen Dolan.
Mayor, council members, my name is Darrell Smith, and I live in Cottonwood. I'm here for, hopefully to see this pass. I am, let's put it this way. I am so tired of the discrimination against gays, homosexual, lesbians, whatever. I have a very dear friend. She calls me her father. She's now 49 years old, and I've known her forever. She has two sons. One of them, the oldest one, Marky, and the younger one, Steven. She said when Steven was two years old, she knew there was something wrong. She could not understand why he did not want to play with any boys. He wanted to play with dolls, with dresses, with all kinds of things. And she said, I tried to deny it. I went to church. Church told me, no, no, no. Anyway, as he was risen, as he was brought up in the family, they accepted this fact. However, his brother refuses to accept the fact that his brother is a homosexual. Because the church says that is a terrible thing, and it's morally wrong, et cetera, et cetera. I am so tired of that. I have just tons of gay friends. And I have, you know, I listen to the gays and lesbians tonight. I listen to the people that are for this ordinance. They're decent, loving people. Ruben, you mentioned last time, you know all about discrimination because of your name and who you are. That's the same way with these people. You know, all they want to do is be treated equally as anybody else. They want the same rights. They want the right to live together, love each other, have families, and live a normal, for them, it's life. The question my little friend Janine asked me was, bring it up to the council tonight. Ask the people, when in their life did they decide to be straight or gay? Now, everybody knows you have an important episode in your life. You know, the ladies particularly, of course, they can tell you what happened 35 years ago and it kicked, word for word. But, but when did they make the decision to be straight or gay? You know? No. I know too many people that have never had to make that decision because they're heterosexuals. The gay people, the lesbians, the homosexuals, they're born that way. They are, it's not a choice. And I'm tired of hearing that. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure here. And I hope you vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did Mr. Hightower, is Mr. Hightower here?
He left.
He's gone, okay. So I can just put that one aside. Okay, Joellen Dolan. And then next is Arlene and Jean O'Sullivan.
Yes, thank you, Council, for hearing me. I appreciate it. I did not come here with a speech prepared because I wanted to speak from my heart. I have two beautiful, beautiful boys that are gay, highly respected young men. One of them was on the Council of the Gay Pride for two years. I couldn't ask for better boys. I also have a straight son, who's recently married to his sweetheart. And they support our boys and love them with all of their hearts. My boys, I, there's nothing I can say now that hasn't been said. And I agree with this gentleman who just spoke. I knew from the time my boys were small that they were gay. It is not a choice. And if someone, I had an Uncle Jack when I was growing up, and I didn't know. All I knew is Uncle Jack lived alone. And I didn't know until I was an adult and saw how he was discriminated against. And that poor man lived a life with no love, no mate, no nothing, because it was so taboo. And I think it's... If I thought that is what my boys had to face, the discrimination against gays, it's criminal. It's criminal. And there've been gay people that have suffered injustices that no heterosexual have had to suffer because of their sexual preferences that they had no choice over. And that's the thing that scares me the most. It's the ignorance. It's the ignorance of Christians, I'm sorry, and I am a Christian, of some that say God, it is an abomination to God. I've read the Bible twice. I've read the Bible twice. I don't know very many people who've read it once, and I have yet to find one, one verse in the Bible that says anything against homosexuality. There's not one verse. And thank you for saying what you said, Mr. Pratt. This nation was founded on liberty and justice for all. And the fact that we even have to vote on this is ludicrous. I want to say that, but the fact that we do, and I understand because of social issues and, and for hospitals and different rights have to be written out. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. After Arlene and Jean O'Sullivan is Mitch Levy. Okay, Arlene and Jean O'Sullivan. Okay. The next would be Mitch Levy. And after that is Cherie Anderson.
Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me speak. I wasn't going to say anything, but after listening to some of these people, some of them think they want to hide behind religion. I was raised by probably the most racist man I know. My father was ridiculous. I joined the military. I served a career. And I fought for the rights of everybody. Everybody should have a chance to be with who they want to be with. It's not somebody's choice to sit there and say, "You can't because we want to hide behind the Bible." I urge the council to pass this amendment. I think it's the right thing to do. And Terrence read it exactly. Equal for everybody and the rights for everybody. It has nothing to do with religion. It's a personal choice. And who am I or who is anybody to take away somebody else's personal choice? I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Okay, Cherie Anderson and Chris Zellner is our last speaker. If you would like to speak, there are forms. Please get one, and everyone will have an opportunity. Cherie Anderson.
Madam Mayor, fellow council members, thank you for having me here tonight. I did prepare something this time. And basically, I just kind of want to point out, we as individuals, we as adults, we have the right to vote. We have the right to serve in the military, drive cars, possess firearms, smoke cigarettes, drink alcohol, medicinally smoke marijuana, skydive. We can choose to have an abortion. Not typically a gay issue. How is it that we as individuals are responsible enough to make all these important life decisions, even some that do and can affect others, but we're not responsible enough as individuals to choose to come together in a union? It's amazing to me that equal rights are still being fought over. Today, I'm fighting for civil unions. Tomorrow, I'll be fighting for equal marriage rights. Why? Because of the principle of it. Tell me how it's right to choose who I love is more condemning than the right to choose to kill a life with an abortion. Some people make the argument that marriage is supposed to be for those planning to have children. What about men and women who cannot? People that were born that way? People that had injuries that cannot have children? Heterosexuals? Some people past their primes or those that are just realizing that they just found the love of their life after the chance of having a children, child. Should they not be allowed to marry? Should they not be allowed to go into a civil union? At the last meeting, some council members and community members shared that they have children or family members that are homosexual. And because of that, they felt compelled to support the passing of the civil union order. I'd like those opposed to the order to think about their children, their babies, their beloved grandchildren. Can you imagine looking into their loving eyes and telling them that they are not good enough? That the way that they chose to love is wrong? That is a choice that will be compared to sexual abuse of children or heinous acts of sexual use of animals. Can you look in their faces and tell them that? I couldn't. And I'm lucky enough that my family couldn't do that to me either. They support my decisions and they love me regardless. It's often said that this should be put to a vote to the community. And last meeting that was addressed as well, it was also addressed that you are here because we voted you here. I feel like it's appropriate that the council make that vote. And I hope that you guys vote for the civil unions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Zellner. And if there's anyone else, please bring up your forms.
Hi, my name's Chris Zellner. Like she said, this is my first time speaking, and I am, I'm 19 years old, so I'm just able to speak here without parental consent. I'd like to thank Mr. Pratt for his statement earlier about how we all live with liberty and justice for all. But one thing that he failed to mention is, before that, it says, "One nation under God." And my personal belief is that the pledge still means something. And if we're going to say, "Under God," then we do need to use biblical principles. We need to consider them. And I know a lot of people are upset about me, and I am friends with Jalen. He actually mentors me. So if you guys want to discuss it afterwards, we can discuss it. But we're not here as a popularity contest. We're here standing up for what we believe in, just like everybody else, as the opposing side. And another thing that I wasn't aware of is that minors weren't allowed to speak at these meetings. And I think that if we're going to fight for civil unions, we need to also fight for those rights for minors too. Because teenagers have a lot to say. There's a lot on their hearts. And I understand they can speak if they have parental consent. But a lot of parents aren't that involved, and they don't really care what their kids think. There's a lot of kids that go to our youth group that don't. The parents aren't involved at all. They come by themselves. They walk. So I think that that needs to be addressed also because there is a lot more out there that are against it that just aren't allowed to speak here. Another thing, I was outside, actually, when this was stated, but my fiance back there told me that a woman came up here and mentioned that homosexuality isn't in the Bible. There's no verse against it in the Bible at all. There are plenty. And there's a thing called the Fire Bible, and there's plenty of other ones where you can go in the back and it shows certain topics, where you can actually search a certain topic. And homosexuality is mentioned. So that's all I have to say. I would like to have the minors thing addressed, how they can't speak here without parental consent. Also, I'm sorry if I offend anybody here, but from what I can see is the scythe for it is all emotion-based. There's no, there's not a lot of factual things. And that was stated very well when Jalen was pushed out the door back there and screamed at outside. So, thank you.
Okay, and then Judy Kellen is next. And after that, Pat Leiter, or Leader? If anyone else would like to speak, please fill out your form and bring it to...
Before I get started, I want to say that I've spent hours looking at the forest and not the tree. And I am so upset to think that I could put in three minutes something to tell you that would be worthwhile. And I want to admit this as evidence. People spend at least 200 to 500 hours on a thesis. And I couldn't even begin in three minutes to tell you what was in here. But the title is "An Investigation of Paternal Attached Relationships Among Homosexuals and Heterosexuals." I'm just going to pass this book around. It's very heavy, contains a lot of information. I'd like to share it with you because, have any of you read it? I'd like to pass, I'd like to pass my journal that I just got, medical. Just look at the title and look at the yellow line and look at the date. November 2013. This is an organization associated with the lesbian and gay. It's called NAMBLA. It is North American, uh, North American Man, Boy Love Association. And I will read very quickly.
If you could go back to the lecture because when they transcribed the minutes, they won't, they won't be able to hear you.
I wanted to pass out North American Man, Boy Love Association. It's called NAMBLA. It's been around since 1970. And it is an organization to, for pedophiles. It's an advocacy organization in the United States. It works to abolish age of consent and laws criminalizing adult sexual involvement with minors. And their second agenda is to campaign the release of all men who have been jailed for sexual contacts with minors that do not involve coercion. Some of you may not even be, be aware of that. There's a quagmire of things out there. And to speak in three minutes about it when I've done hours of research and found out things that I don't want to find out. But we are not fighting this little, small group here. That's not, they're all lovable, sweet people. But what we're fighting is a great, big lesbian-gay movement in the United States. And it wants to portray victims. It wants to portray that they're discriminated against.
Can you go ahead and wrap it up?
I can't wrap it up. I just gave you information and just got started. Could you time me again, please?
Everyone here, the majority here agreed on three minutes. It wasn't something that the, the majority of the people. So I'm sorry.
If I'm against, if I'm for your ordinance, do you think I would vote to let anybody speak longer than three minutes?
Please.
No, that's kind of unfair, isn't it?
Judy, that's enough, please. Three minutes, we all agreed. The council didn't just say, "You just have three minutes." I asked. I asked you all. So the majority rules here.
I can't even explain what I passed out. And Mr. Pratt, we pledged allegiance under God. And Mr. Pratt, we pledged allegiance under God. And so God is the truth, that is where truth came from, and that's where our laws came from.
Three minutes, we all agreed, so we appreciate your comments.
That's right, and I just want to make sure that the big lesbian-gay society...
Judy, stop. We all agreed on three minutes, that's how democracy works, the majority, please.
I've never had my three minutes because I didn't start.
Everybody, when they started their presentation, got three minutes, so, thank you, we appreciate your comments. Pat Leiter, or Leader? And the next speaker is Rachel Sappington.
It's Leader.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the time to speak to you. I do have relatives and I have friends, they're of this persuasion, and that's part of the reason that I am here tonight, because I have seen them go through a whole lot of problems because of this, and most of them have remained celibate because of it, and they have decided to choose not to go against what they should be doing. And their families, even when they were doing what we figured they shouldn't be doing, and what we thought the Lord didn't want them doing, we still love them and we have embraced them. I have friends who don't even know I know they're gay, or whatever, and I have always treated them, I have tutored their children for free, like everybody else in the community, I have given them food, I've done all kinds of things for them. But since you admitted last week that there is no real need for this ordinance, which I explained to you last week that there was no real need, and that was also addressed by our senator from Phoenix, but that you were going to pass this ordinance because you believed that my fellow citizens and I would not allow it to be passed, which I don't understand representative government, but neither did he, I have questions to ask. First of all, I want to know, we were told last time there would be three readings, last time was number one, what happened to number two and three? Two and you're voting, I count better than that, I teach mass, if you need some help, I would be glad to do that. I have mass programs, the schools won't use, they work too well, and eliminate Title I funding, so I'd be glad to help you with that. Why haven't you done your homework? As civil servants, and I use that term lightly, have you investigated where this is going? These people, and you don't realize, you are being used, and I know that, having lived in the middle of a mess in Hollywood, I was raised there, my dad was in the movie industry and the television industry, I lived in Chicago and ended up in the middle of much of this mess. You're being used greatly by people from the GLAD program, NAMBLIA, have you investigated these? Have you seen what's been going on? I have friends that live in cities and states where they've done this, and the horror stories that they're telling that are happening to them and their families, and the people like this, their children are being taught in school...
Ma'am, please just address the council and not be pointing at anyone in the gallery, okay?
Okay.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you. But all of you are being used, and what they're doing is they're teaching the children from preschool on up that they should try it, because you don't know what you are until you have tried it. That is what is being taught, and I know that as a teacher.
Hey, everybody, be respectful, she has a right to her opinion.
I have been told that at classes that I took as a teacher, and totally disagreed with it, and was told I was narrow-minded, okay? Have you investigated the results of the Kinsey report that were silently dismissed, and nobody knew what in the world happened to them? If you had to do some investigation, you don't want to go to newspapers, I wrote for one, they wouldn't print what I investigated, and I quit.
Three minutes.
There were a couple people who got it a little bit longer, so all I want to do is say, what I want to say is Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I want you to have a blessing, glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace to men on whom His favor rests, and may you have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you very much. After Rachel Sappington is Bradley Blaylock. Did I say your name right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just a little bit longer, we're almost through the comments, if everybody could remain respectful so everyone could have a chance to speak.
Madam Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker, I may start to talk pretty fast. The pledge does say "one nation under God," however, our founding fathers were also inclusive of all gods. My God is not necessarily your God. My God loves me. I'm gay, that's fine, He still loves me. If your God doesn't love me, that's all right, mine does. And I would also, I believe this ordinance is important, my family lives six hours away. If something were to happen to me, I would like my partner to have the opportunity to take care of me and see me, if they can't give consent. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Bradley Blaylock?
Hello, honorable people, I just wanted to say, gosh, my grandfather, the dedicated Park across from riot, you know, he was a medic on Iwo Jima, he was helpful to any wounded human being, and he refused to carry a gun. I think he just would have been so disappointed in, you know, how, like for him, family was getting together on the weekends, we had, they had a spot right on the creek in Lake Monizuma, we could hear music from the church, and it was just so beautiful to be out in nature and have family together, and, you know, when he came to visit my partner who tried to commit suicide in the hospital, you know, he was very supportive, you know, he would have, you know, he was a, he just wouldn't have accepted, or he would have just been really disappointed in how religion's not doing what it's good for, which is to build community, it could be a platform for creating original thought, to save the planet and unify us that way, you know, but to use religion as a platform for hate, to seduce people by love into hate is worse than Hitler. So I really just want to encourage people to create an environment where you see a child for who they are, and you nurture their gift, and they get to master it into their adulthood and then share it. But to say that I'm a pedophile is not true. I'm not, I'm an adult, I'm attracted to people my age or a little bit older, I have a partner, you know, it's just not my thing, you know, there's laws that protect against that criminal behavior, and there are FBI people, they're working hard to abolish that, like if churches, you know, maybe could use groups to help pedophiles, I don't know, to help them not continue that negative behavior, which is violence, that would be great. But that's all I have to say, you know, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Jon Mitchell?
Thank you for allowing me to address you. I appreciate the comments of Mr. Pratt earlier citing the importance of the Constitution and the rights we all enjoy. I see this as a very simple matter, appears to me, and I do understand, having been on the city council many, many years, where I migrated from, these are difficult decisions, all right? And I appreciate the time you're taking to do this. However, it appears to me that even the discussion of this matter is unconstitutional. I don't understand why we're even having it, honestly. And the simple fact of the matter is, it appears very logical that you would, in a matter like this where there is so much disagreement, and I can tell from standing in the back all this time, there's a lot of tension going on here. So I would propose that you seriously consider putting it to the vote of the populace. I mean, it only makes sense. I mean, I don't even know why we're having this. So I just wanted to leave you with that.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else want to speak before we close the floor to the public? Okay, now's your chance, give yourselves a big hand for being respectful. Yes, Mr. Dowling?
I just, this topic came up a couple times throughout the night, and it's something that I've looked into before, and I just want to clarify that today, that's what the pledge says, but in its original form, it didn't say that. When you go back to the purest form of it, when it was first created, it's gone through several iterations, and the term "under God" wasn't actually placed in it until 1954. So I think we made it from the beginning until 1954, and it was placed in there for whatever reason, I'm not going to debate that, but we need to remember that it started out very simple. It said, "I pledge allegiance to my flag and the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all," in its purest form. So that's the original, and I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want to discourage anybody else.
Council members, do you have any more comments? Vice Mayor?
If we're going to quote the government and the pledge of allegiance and all of that, I would also like to say that we also have the right to disagree, respectfully disagree, not labeling anybody, when we all leave this room, everybody has their rights, and we all have a right to our own opinions. I've had some medical issues with my husband, who can no longer speak for himself, I have to sign papers, I have to sign papers to get my great-grandchildren out of school. I don't have the right to walk into the school and take Nikki out because she may be ill, without my granddaughter giving permission for me to do this. I can't go to the hospital and get information, or get x-ray information for my husband, without the doctors sending home a form, him signing it, him putting down who he wants information released to. So some of it's convoluted, some of the argument is convoluted, a lot of it I can go along with and all, but we still need to stay respectful when this vote is over, we all have a right to our opinions, and it doesn't mean that anybody's prejudiced if they don't go along with what I think or with what you think, it's just their opinion and they have a right to it. Thank you.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Dowling said, "under God" was added in 1954, and it really was in response to McCarthyism, which we know was a pretty dangerous movement sweeping the country. And I'd like to remind everybody that, again, with liberty and justice for all, and our country didn't always live up to that. For instance, it wasn't until 1920 that women got their civil rights, okay? Less than 100 years ago. It wasn't until the '60s that a lot of minorities, including Hispanic Americans, Native Americans, African Americans, couldn't even vote or go dine in the same place as I did. It makes me proud to be an American that we are fluid enough to make these changes. And the one we're talking about tonight, I think, is just one more change. It's a right we've denied, and it's just another step in us becoming what we say we are.
I did a little bit of research on representative forms of government and what that means, and that is the kind of government that our forefathers set up. And I also asked the city clerk what an election would cost, and that would be $15,000. So, you know, it's, using the representative form of government, council would have to consider the cost of an election, and that is something that would have to be considered, so. Any other comments from council members? Yes, Mr. Elski?
Just repeat what I said last time, there's some new faces here and whatnot, but I fully support this ordinance and have for a long time, and I just really believe that what we're discussing tonight is equality, and like I said the last meeting, you know, we are all Americans, and that is one thing that we've always worked hard and hard to achieve, is greater equality for all of our citizenry, so that is why I support this. I took the oath of office, I took it seriously, and in my opinion, I'm just enforcing and spreading equality.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we're not going to change anybody's mind tonight, I mean, people have pretty strong opinions, and that's fine, I understand that, you know, but I also understand that ordinance 604, really, as I see it, is a small step forward in recognizing equality for everyone. Unfortunately, we do have to, you know, we talk about equality in the country, but there are certain areas that we're still not equal in, and some of these things have to be defined. And I think it's just a small step in recognizing equality for everyone, I don't feel we have any second-class people around here, so not to pass this, I think, would be, in my opinion, the wrong thing to do, so. You need a motion?
Mr. Dowling?
I would love to make the motion when it's time for it, if somebody else is going to finish.
Would you?
No, that's fine.
Is that fine? Mr. Dowling?
I move to approve ordinance number 604, mending the municipal code, because I don't take this lightly, by adding a new Title 16 civil unions.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion, and council member Hattig seconded it, so by a show of hands, would you please signify whether you vote yes? Okay, and a show of hands voting no. So for the record, deputy clerk, we showed our vote by, our signifying by raising our hands, so, did you get all that? Okay, thank you very much. So moving on to the next item, oh, do I have to read, yeah, we have to read something.
Madam Mayor, I'd recommend that you read the vote into the record, not the roll call, but the vote tally.
The vote tally? Okay, so read the person's name?
No, no, it doesn't have to be a roll call.
Oh, we still need a roll call?
No, 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 you can read into the record that, I believe the vote was 6-1, but that's for you to read into the record.
Okay, so I just need to say the vote was 6-1? Let's wait till...
Can I use the question, am I free to split?
Yes, we're going to just read the ordinance now. Okay, so the vote was 6-1, 6 yes and 1 no. Deputy clerk, please read ordinance number 604 by title only.
Ordinance number 604, an ordinance of the mayor and city council, council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, mending the municipal code by adding a new Title 16 civil unions.
Okay, thank you very much. So, okay, the next item is, okay, we did the signs, Resolution Number 2726, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona through its Department of Transportation and the Yavapai Apache Nation, Yavapai County, the city of Sedona, and the towns of Camp Verde, Clarkdale, and Jerome, for approval of intersection access points for the proposed improvements on State Route 260 from Thousand Trails to I-17. Morgan Scott will present this item. You gonna be here all night? Oh, coffee?
We should have one, I'm out. It's my drug of choice these days.
All the way for that to come on. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and Morgan Scott with the Development Services Department. I believe you're familiar with this IGA, this is ADOT's proposal to improve State Route 260 from, basically out near I-17, I believe it's actually from Willshire Drive, is the first drive that comes into Cottonwood, which is Thousand Trails, or all the way from I-17 into Thousand Trails. Only a small portion of that is actually within Cottonwood city limits. In fact, of the seven proposed intersections, Thousand Trails is the only one that will be completely within Cottonwood. We talked about this before, they are proposing, I believe, five roundabouts and two, what they call kind of a left-turn restriction, intersections. They will also allow private development to put in right-turn-only driveways at up to a quarter-mile increments. So they are allowing for some access along the highway, it won't be a complete freeway, but it will be a very efficient way to move traffic. Madam Mayor, I believe you are very concerned, as well as other members of the council, about bicycle safety, which is why I wanted to point this out. This is a typical cross-section of the proposed roadway, and you see both eight and 10-foot wide shoulders along the entire section. I do know the bicycle community has come forward, and they said, "Well, what about the more recent section of 260 from Thousand Trails into Cottonwood?" Unfortunately, ADOT is not proposing working on that at this time, but it's definitely something they'll keep in mind and consider. The IGA before you tonight is just approving the access agreement, that's in your packet.
And it does talk about installing and improving bicycle accommodations between and within Cottonwood and Camp Verde during the design and construction of the project wherever feasible, so this is our wish list, and hopefully, I mean, you know, with the amount of funds, 64 or 66 million dollars?
66.
66 million dollars were allocated to this project, so this resolution will help us, I mean, if there is funding, to maybe intercede for bicyclist accommodations. We know that it will help the economy, and that's our goal. So I really like it that our resolution adds that little piece to it. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I just want to say, this is really the plan that was presented to us, and pretty much detailed by the ADOT representative, I believe, last meeting.
A couple of times.
A couple of times, so, yeah, we're quite familiar with this, and I really think we've all bought into it. it.
And ADOT was willing to, I apologize for jumping in there.
No problem.
ADOT was willing to send a representative here tonight because we knew it was going to be a longer meeting and because they had been here before, we told them that wouldn't be necessary.
Yes, well, they presented to us at least twice, so we were pretty cognizant of, of the plan and I think it's important to, um, talk about the cooperation that we're all doing among the communities, the cities and towns and the county, and I would commend the council for, for that. You've all been very good and, um, I think safety and capacity are two very important things and those are addressed in the plan. So, um, any comments from members of the public? Yes, ma'am, please come to the lectern.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I was, I didn't know this was on the, on the board, so I was excited to hear it again. I was just thinking, is it really important that we have five? I drive that route often and it doesn't seem to be that hectic that we would need five roundabouts. Maybe a progression of things, maybe try a couple out. If you still feel like we need more, add a few more in. Six, yeah.
Seven.
Seven, yeah, no, no thanks. That's, that's a lot of roundabout in my opinion, so I would like to see us start with maybe two and then move our way up as we see the need for it. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Garrison?
The discussion started years ago at 14 intersections. So seven roundabouts is a, is a dramatic improvement over what was originally investigated and put forward to the public, so, you know, you have, you have to draw a line somewhere where, you know, and this seems to be the most responsible movement towards improving the safety on that road. Roundabouts are not everybody's favorite, but they're definitely beat an intersection any day of the week as far as safety and, and movement of people go, so, you know, you just have to figure out what you can and can't live with. I, one, one thing, and I applaud the mayor's, has gone to many meetings and I got to hear her speak at the, uh, Yavapai County Board of Supervisors meeting in support of this and also standing up for bicyclists and, and others who use the road besides the traffic and, and people and cars. And one thing that I keep hearing left out of this whole discussion that I hope doesn't get forgotten is, you know, the forest alignment was a route that was put forward years ago and in order to get this job done, all the emphasis has been taken off trying to get that, that road put in. As you say, it, it would be nice not to have any roundabouts and it'd be nice not to have any intersections, any lights, any traffic signals between Clarkdale and, and I-17. That's just never going to happen. But no matter what happens and, and in what manner we build this road, we're still impacted on this end of the valley by commercial development and it would really be nice if we could open up an alternative route for us to move more freely to I-17. So, I, I applaud your liking to keep the road as clean as possible and I share that opinion. I don't think it can happen with 260, but I'd love to see us pursue another avenue to get a faster, cleaner route back out to I-17 and not have to deal with the commercial.
Right. I actually didn't say no roundabouts, just to maybe start with two. So is the plan, did you all seven, all at once shot?
Okay, so I'll explain that to you. Um, the ADOT staff was not fond of this project and they fought it tooth and nail, but the ADOT board, because all the cities came to them together and said they would collaborate and cooperate, we got this money. There was $15 million allocated. It's usually seven million, maybe eight million or more a mile for a project now. That's how much it costs to build a road. So, um, we worked together and the ADOT staff said, "Okay, board, if you're going to do this project, it's not going to get done for 15 million." They allocated 66 million to do this project right. So if we don't cooperate with all our communities and especially Camp Verde because it's in their town, um, they will take that money somewhere else and we'll still have the road, the unsafe road that we have now. So as elected officials, we've been working very hard to collaborate and I understand your issues and we've given up a lot. On the other hand, the property, the road is mostly in Camp Verde and so even though several years ago, we had a, um, a community event that ADOT asked all of us what we saw and what we wanted and there, if I recall, it was Plan A and the public input in that. Because it went against what Camp Verde wanted, it, the ADOT could not go ahead with the project. So we have a road that's two-lane, it's unsafe, there's traffic coming together, and so this is going to greatly improve it. It's sort of like our last chance to get funding. If we don't cooperate and take it, there will be no improvements at all. So, um, in order, I would say, you know, do the road right with the 66 million, because if we do two roundabouts and it's not finished, it may be years into the future and we would have the unsafe clogging again to get that highway done. So there's been a lot of work and I understand your issues and I feel exactly the same way as you do about that, but I also have been through, I was on council during the prior, um, collaborative effort that didn't work out. So we've all learned from our mistakes and we're trying to work together as communities. I really, um, like council members Garrison's, um, thought about the, the forest alignment. I wonder if that could be, like a sentence could be added?
I would hate to push-
At this point, we've worked so hard to get here that-
Right, well, it would just be making a statement that our council would like to look at that in the future and we don't want to forget about it.
Maybe we could just make that statement.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
We also had a road at one time called the bypass with no roundabouts or lights and now we have it, so there's no guarantee if we did put another forest road through there down, down the road that they're not going to put roundabouts and lights on it either.
Depends on what the, um, whether there's development there, so it all depends on development. Okay, so, thank you very much for your comments.
I just want to thank you for educating me. I mean, I didn't actually know all of that, so for all you guys' hard work.
You're welcome. Um, Mr., Mr. Scott?
If you don't mind, I'm here, I'd also like to jump into that question.
Okay.
Councilman Garrison hit the, uh, the history of that project very well, but I also wanted to, uh, many of you are familiar that ADOT, um, and many local communities got together and kind of pounded out, how, how did we just come to that number? So I wanted to just explain how that happened. Basically, they need to keep legal access to everyone who, who owns property on that road. So ADOT staff worked very hard to try to get the minimum number of intersections, but still keep legal access. And there were even a couple of things done, um, I believe it's Old 279, where they are actually tearing down an old road, building a new road, so in order to combine what, you know, when you have a road coming in from one side and a road coming in from the other, they're moving one road to limit the number of intersections. So that, that's where that number, number came from.
Okay, thank you very much. So is Catherine?
Yes.
Please come to the-
Catherine Whitman.
Yes.
So, I am very familiar with the road because for about three and a half years, I lived on that area where the light currently stands, Cherry. And so I lived there when it was just a dirt road. We had no light, however, I applaud you for doing the roundabouts because it was an extreme expense to put a, a light that has so much maintenance. You have conduits for the lighting, maintenance, and it is not a sustainable environment to create so much waste, copper, everything else that is involved. However, between Cherry and Thousand Trails, I think if I understood correctly, last week there was going to be two more roundabouts by the dealership and another section, and I think that it was endorsed to create more traffic on 279. And so, haven't been down 279, but when I used to travel it, it was on paved road, so my car took a toll. I couldn't access those businesses because every time I literally had three of my engine mounts replaced during those three and a half years, which was a severe expense to me. So, those lands, part of those lands are owned by the Yavapai Apache Nation on the other side and I understand that easy access to that road with the additional roundabouts. However, I wondered if there was allowance in that budget to pave that 279 to increase commerce to those businesses that are in back, which there's a lot. You know, there was a crematory that was in, proposed to be built back there, furniture stores, there was a lot. So I'm wondering if that ADOT fund is also going to support that road to be improved.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Scott, and could, before you come up, can you run and turn on the lights? Thank you. I'm gonna have to ask the city manager to have a light person.
Clapper.
Get a remote control light.
I don't know if you want to put a clapper in, that might be very confusing. Um, as far as using ADOT funds to improve a non-ADOT road, that may be very difficult if that's something that we want to get together from a Verde Valley Transportation, uh, perspective. Um, if council desires us to do that, something definitely we can talk about at the Verde Valley TPO. But I don't think, um, ADOT would work very well on spending ADOT funds on a, a local road.
And so where is, is that as Cottonwood or a county road?
County. I believe it's mostly Camp Verde, a small portions of it may also run through the county, but majority of it's Camp Verde.
Okay. So, um, that might just be something that you get on the agenda for the VVTPO and discuss.
And if you'd like, I can work with the, um, citizen to find out exactly a little more details.
That would be great.
Tell the county to do it.
So, um, you might want to give her your card or, I guess, um, we have some of her information here.
I can give you.
Okay, if you just give him your information, then you two can work together on your issue. Okay, um, any other comments about this resolution? I would entertain, oh, did I, I did ask the public to speak, they just did it, so yes, please.
I move to approve resolution number 2726.
Second. So council member Pratt made the motion, council member Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, deputy clerk, please read resolution number 272 by title only.
2726.
Oh, what did I say? 272? 2726, please.
Resolution number 2726, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, the Yavapai Apache Nation, Yavapai County, city of Sedona, and the towns of Camp Verde, Clarkdale, and Jerome, concerning proposed improvements to State Route 260 between Thousand Trails and I-17 and encouraging the Arizona Department of Transportation to consider installing and improving bicycle accommodations between and within Cottonwood and Camp Verde during the design and construction of the project where feasible.
I really like that, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next item is resolution number 2727, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai Apache Nation for public transportation services. Bruce Morrow.
Madam Mayor, council, this is another agreement that we've worked on for, I know it was worked on long before I even got here. Um, the Yavapai Apache Nation is now getting ready, I understand. I talked to them today. They have their buses, so we're getting closer. What this agreement does is it allows them to use our bus stops, basically, our transfer point in front of the library and it allows us to transfer our people onto their buses. So basically, it's, it's an agreement that-
It's a win-win, a no-brainer?
We're going to cooperate. So that's, that's basically what it does.
Okay.
We're, we've been working pretty diligently with them to get this agreement and to get everything going and helping them get going. So, staff has been very busy going back and forth, working out their routes and working with them to get this thing going.
All right, that sounds wonderful. I know, like you said, we've been talking about that for years and, um, it's great to have a collaborative process and it's great to work regionally. Mr. Pratt?
I finally get to say it in a meeting.
He's been waiting for this all night.
This is a no-brainer. Anything that improves transportation, public transportation in the valley is good for all of our cities and towns, so I commend you for working with them. And again, I think it's a no-brainer, I think it's a great resolution and a great agreement.
Right, I agree and I love the piece of finally connecting Camp Verde with us, Cottonwood, Sedona, you know, we've-
Well, it actually connects more because the Beaver Creek-
The Beaver Creek area will also be involved.
Is also connecting in from that side.
Mm-hmm.
So we actually can get to Lake Monizuma and other places, so.
So if someone lives in Cottonwood and works in Lake Monizuma, they'll have a way to get to work or vice versa. So it's wonderful.
It'll be a very large bunch of people being able to move pretty much anywhere in the Verde Valley.
Throughout the Verde Valley.
Cottonwood rocks.
Yeah, I love it, that's fantastic. Any comments from the public on this item? All right, we got a thumbs up.
Two thumbs up.
Okay, so, um, I would, um, ask for a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number 2727.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy clerk, please read resolution number 2727 by title only.
Resolution number 2727, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai Apache Nation for public transportation services. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, proposed agreement for partial cost sharing for the maintenance and repair of the Leadbetter Law Old Town Sign. And this is Mr. Horton.
Madam Mayor and council, when the council gave direction to staff, um, several years ago to add some funding for the Old Town Association, um, to help with the cost of rehabbing the, the Old Town Cottonwood sign in front of Mr. Leadbetter's law office, there was a discussion, but not direction to staff regarding the, um, the necessary, uh, maintenance to that sign. Um, it wasn't required until, or significant maintenance wasn't required until just recently and, uh, we were, staff was recently approached, um, by Mr. Leadbetter's office, asking that the city share in the costs. So what we've developed, uh, and what we're proposing is that, um, the, the city share in the costs, uh, up to a thousand dollars a year. So it would split evenly the first $2,000 of costs for the, the necessary repairs and maintenance to the sign.
Okay.
So how often does the sign have to be repaired or refurbished?
We really don't know. I think, uh, I think this was in, uh, 2000, I, it's funny because when I spoke to the clerk to ask her to, to pull the minutes for this, I thought it was maybe a year, year and a half ago, come to find out it was-
2009?
More than that, so time flies.
It does.
This is, this is the first this has come up since the council first authorized the city's participation in, in the cost of rehabbing, what the requirements will be going forward, I, I don't think anybody would want to hazard a guess, um, which is why I thought it was important to put that hard cap on the city's annual contribution so that in any given year, um, the city would not be contributing more than a thousand dollars.
So that wouldn't, that wouldn't be accumulative?
No, that's the question I was going to ask you.
No, no, I-
Doesn't roll over?
No, it does not roll over. It's in any year, we would, we would contribute up to a thousand dollars and then each new year. Matter of fact, we backdated this year so we wouldn't see a, a second invoice until the end of this fiscal year. So we began this contribution year, if you will, on, on July 1st.
Um, Mr. Ilinski?
Um, wouldn't this be a better, um, mechanics of this, uh, operation maintenance be better served through the Old Town Association? I mean, is that, has it been considered, I think, at our last, when we first discussed it, that was sort of-
That was how, that was how we handled the 6,000, right?
We sort of passed it through them and if we couldn't maybe just increase their budget if, if necessary to pay for it, I just feel, I don't know, I still have hesitations about, you know, given, the city giving money to the Leadbetter Law Firm. It just, it rubbed me the wrong way then a little bit, it rubs me the wrong way now a little bit. No offense, um, you know, to the business, it doesn't matter to the business, I just, my mind at the time was we need to preserve the sign because they were literally going to cut it down and it certainly is a benefit to Cottonwood. I understand, I don't have any issues with us funding them, I just feel like it might be better served through the Old Town Association.
And I think that's a legitimate way to, to view this. Um, I think at the time too, there was a concern about, um, giving a gift of public funds and benefiting a private party, um, but I think the consensus of the council at that time was there is a public benefit to having that sign there and, and in light of that discussion, um, I, I think to the extent that the city benefited from having the sign rehabbed and there now, it, the council could find- city benefited from having the sign rehabbed and there now, it, the council could find that there's a public benefit to having it remain and that would justify the agreement with even a private party, although it's perfectly reasonable if you want this agreement to be with the Old Town Association.
I'm really fine with the way it is now and I think it's laid out very clearly and I don't have any issues with it. I just, based on the first time we discussed it a few years back, I kind of felt like that was, we were going to try to sort of shove this off on the OTA and...
Okay, so who's first?
I'm sorry, but Madam Mayor, the shorter answer is also, we got the invoice from Leadbetter.
Yeah. You know, I was going to say, yeah, it's a private sign. He wasn't, didn't have to put Old Town on there, Cottonwood on there. He did. So it's kind of a partnership. We're advertising for ourselves. So I...
Public-private partnership.
Yeah, I have no problems with this issue whatsoever.
Mr. Garrison?
Yeah, I think having the sign's great. I remember when it was talked about cutting it down, it got rebuilt, it got repurposed. If I remember right, there was two or three different drawings of how they could do it. I think they picked inappropriate. And, you know, one thing that I keep thinking about is how that sign is used for publicity for every event we have in this town. You know, that's, that one picture you see over and over and over again. It's, you know, it's in the Arizona Republic a lot. It's in our local papers a lot. I think it serves the whole city regardless of its placement in Old Town. My concern is where it gets paid from and being paid through the Old Town Association, I think becomes problematic in that we have to adjust our donation to them, so to say, or the monies that we give off to them to do their purposes. I'm just wondering if this wouldn't be better paid for or paid with our bed tax and the monies that we forward to the chamber, being that this is a Cottonwood endorsement, a Cottonwood publicity matter, not just strictly an Old Town. So I think their budget definitely could handle it better. And a thousand bucks in a year, on any given year, wouldn't be a huge problem for that budget. So that would be my take on it is I think we should be looking at taking that out of our, the monies we forward from the bed tax to the chamber.
And, you know, the bed taxes for the chamber are paid by the hotels. And so do the hotels receive a benefit from your idea?
When you're, when you're publicizing Cottonwood, you're publicizing Old Town. That's beds, it's people staying in beds. So it's marketing. That's why I think it's more appropriate that it pays for all of Cottonwood, not just Old Town.
Okay. And so I would just like to say that I consider the public-private partnership. I'm comfortable with the city, city using this expense because I think it is a valid expense. If, you know, Mr. Leadbetter used to have his law office up on Willard and now he's got it down here in Old Town. But who's to say that he wouldn't decide to sell that and make it into a hotel or motel someday? And if it's Motel 6 in Old Town Cottonwood and it says that on the sign, I would still support that business. Don't care whose name is on it as a private entity, that business, that sign. I mean, I have people like Randy who have lived here all their lives that tell me that they used to come down from Mingus at night and that sign directed them as to where they were going. You know, so it's a very important landmark and I'm perfectly comfortable with the ordinance, or not ordinance, but the proposal written as is. Mr. Pratt?
Just about every picture I see of Cottonwood, whether it's in the Arizona Republic Travel Magazine, somewhere in there is a picture of the street with that sign. And it is a public landmark and it almost could be part of our branding. And it's great that we saved it. It's that Art Deco stuff that it would have been a shame if it was around.
So I was taking pictures of it during the walk-in on Main and I sent them to Lana and she asked my permission to use them because everybody is always asking her for that landmark, a sign of that, or a photo of that sign. And I said, of course, all my pictures are public property. But it is really for, you know, everyone. It is a beacon of Cottonwood. So any comments from members of the public on this item? If not, Mr. Pratt, you have your hand up?
I was going to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the proposed agreement for partial cost sharing for the maintenance and repair of the Leadbetter Law Old Town Sign.
I'll second that. Mr. Pratt made the motion. The mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the last item. Have I covered everything? Because we skipped around.
Yes.
You think I did, got it all? Okay. Claims and adjustments.
I have one thing to mention on the claims. It looks like we're double paying face-to-face live. I must just kind of duplicate in there, but, or there's two invoices for the exact amount of that.
Two invoices.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay. All right. Any, Mr. Garrison?
We have, every month, we have, it seems like the same ones come back over and over again as professional services. And I'm just kind of curious, where do we, where do we kind of tally that up and determine what we're getting for our money? And I point out specifically that Brown &amp; Brown, you know, that one comes up month after month. We also get, you know, the different engineering services disbursements and it just, they're really large amounts. And I don't, other than our yearly look at the budget, I don't know where we really get a handle on what those funds are actually providing us. And that's, that's my question. It's kind of an overall thing. I'm not trying to be specific to any individual line item. I'm just trying to get my hands around the budget a little better than our yearly review.
And without Rudy here, probably, I don't know, is that a question you want to...
Rudy is here.
Oh, Rudy's here. Mr. Rudy, oh, come on out. Yes, please, will you address that? I did not know you were here.
Who else we asked for? This is great.
Well, to be honest with you, Brown &amp; Brown will probably continue for some time to go come. Probably, it's been questioned by our attorney as far as, you know, all the different things. Probably Tom Whitmer would be the person I would direct you to go talk to about what is on, what is being paid through that. He's more aware of all the little issues involved with Brown &amp; Brown. Some of them is more or less not necessarily legal as it is, some contractual and some research that's being done. All these other items that you see that keep coming up are partial payments. Obviously, we have consultants. They don't, they don't go out and bill us all at once, obviously, and they can't do a project for months or years on end without billing us. So they just keep billing us as construction, be it 12th Street, be it Mingus Street, be it Main Street, any projects that are being done, they bill us on the schedule. Anytime you'd like, any or any council would like to, in a clearer accounting, we'd be more than happy to pull the invoices. As a matter of fact, our mayor occasionally asks us to pull invoices and stuff for her to research. These are all available for council and for the public to view at any point in time. So any questions you have on any of these, we can certainly go ahead and pull them for you, before or after a council meeting.
It wasn't, I understand ongoing expenses and the law and the engineering would definitely be two of those that are ongoing. I guess what I was after is that they can tend to be fairly large amounts and all that adds up over time. And other than the ones we go through it during the budget, I don't really have a clear handle on exactly what we're paying that much money towards and, you know, what we're getting back out of it. You know, and I understand there's different litigation and all that that's dealing with water issues and so. I understand what is going. I guess what I'm just uneasy that we continue to pay this large of an amount without really maybe necessarily having a better handle on how much longer we're going to be paying this amount and...
Well, to be honest with you, that's why you have people like Dan and myself and our attorney that looks at these items before they're paid. And again, you know, it's, if there's a description that we can help you with and modify our descriptions so it'd make it easier for you, by all means, point them out. We try to make them as short as possible so we don't go out and do pages and pages. And again, you know, if you have a concern with any of these or if you want us to give you more detailed accounting, by all means, we'd be more than happy to provide them for you. You know, we just put out a listing because it's, one, we try to keep it to one page. We've had in the past, we had multiple pages. We've kind of avoided that by condensing it as much as possible. Outside of, you know, council asking us to provide some backup documentation on this, that's also possible. But we just need to be directed as what it is exactly you would be, what is it that you're exactly looking for?
And I'm not looking for detail. I'm looking for a better understanding of the overall picture of where these funds are going and how much longer those funds are going to keep going there. So I have a better idea of where our budget's going. That's just me. Like I said, I'm not, I don't want to get stuck in the details. I just want to have a better understanding of this is a very large amount and it's a recurring month-to-month, you know, bill. So, you know, to what, what end is that? You know, what are we getting for that money and is it going to end? Or is this, I just, I just don't have a clear understanding of what is, what's being done.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Garrison, we would certainly be happy to sit down with any council member who has questions about these kind of specifics.
About any item?
It's, it's probably not, you know, a great item to discuss in a lot of detail in this form, but certainly Tom Whitmer has, you know, a detail of where we're doing these. I think it's also important for the council to know that at our staff meeting with all the department heads, we go through the claims and adjustments to make sure that, you know, we can explain each one of those claims and adjustments should the council ask. And certainly if any council member ever wants more detail, we're available to sit down and give you that.
I apologize. Like I said, I'm not trying to get drawn down in the details. I'm brand new to this. I'm still trying to get my head around this. And every month, I keep seeing these costs come up and I'm just trying to have a better understanding. You've all been dealing with this much longer than I have. So, you know, I have a lot of catching up to do yet and this is one of the areas I need to do that in.
Well, by all means, we, we're always, and you've come into our offices before, and we want to make you as comfortable as possible with, especially stuff like these because these are big-ticket items and someone will continue for years to come. But by all means, you know, if you have, would like to, come on in and we'll sit down with a cup of coffee or glass of water and go pull out whatever you'd like.
Thank you very much.
So just to let you all know, and Councilmember Howdige would know this from being the mayor in the past, the mayor's given the list, the check register. And after the new bookkeeping, it's like, oh, man, that thing is like just grinding. But I read every item that's spent and I question, if I have a question. I march right into wherever I need to and ask questions. And council members can do the same. You can, you know, certainly go in and ask a question, get educated on the process. If there's an item that disturbs you, you know, find out about it. Members of the public can do the same. So this is just the way it is in Cottonwood, as I say at my TV show. That's the way it is in Cottonwood. So any more questions?
My first step would be to probably meet with you and just, because like I said, I don't want to get bogged down in details. I don't want to take a lot of staff time. I just want to get a better understanding of what's going on. So I think the mayor probably could...
There's pages and pages of water refunds. Those are a lot of fun. So, okay. Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion?
And adjustments.
And I'll second that. So did anybody else second at first? I was just, oh, did, okay. Mr. Tim made the motion and Mr. Rubin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn. Okay, the mayor made the motion. Mr. Garrison seconded it and we are adjourned.